On April 12th at 6:01 PM to order, unless I see an objection. Seeing no objection, the meeting is called to order. Councilwoman Tomage, can you please lead us in the pledge and the invocation in the pledge, please?
Yes, please rise. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, do you want to introduce the new officers to us before I swear them in or after?
Mayor and council, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to two of our newest officers, both of which just graduated from the Fulton County Police Academy, so basic mandate school. We're excited to have them on board. Standing next to me is Alec Brown. Alec has worked as a correctional officer with the City of Atlanta Department of Corrections since 2018. And prior to that, he worked in retail and hospitality. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Savannah State University. We're excited that Alex is on our team now. And then next to him is Matthew Hanson. Matthew has been employed as a customer service staff member in the retail industry since 2018. And he's done several internships. He's a Lambert High School graduate, and he previously attended the Citadel and is currently continuing his education at the University of North Georgia. And as a side note, Matthew received the Academic Award at the Academy, the highest-scoring student, as well as the Marksmanship Award. So we're real excited about that, and please welcome him to the department.
One my honor. One my honor. I will defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
For defending the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia, Charter of Independence of the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia, the Charter of Independence of the Constitution of the United States.
I am not the holder of any accountants for public money.
I am not the holder of any accountants for public money.
Due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States.
I am not the holder of any pockets of trust under the government of the United States.
Any other state or any foreign state which I am.
Any other state or any foreign state which I am.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
Prohibited for public.
Prohibited for public.
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office.
Otherwise qualified to hold the office.
Of peace officer according to the Constitution.
Of a peace officer according to the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Georgia.
And laws of the State of Georgia.
I will faithfully follow the people's rules, regulations, policies.
I will faithfully follow the people's rules, regulations, policies.
And procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department and the City of Dunwoody, Georgia.
And procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department and the City of Dunwoody, Georgia.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all. All right, public comments? I don't know, I don't have any public comments from the audience cards. Ginger, can you check on the screen, please?
Yes, ma'am, I do show Bob Dallas with his hand raised.
Okay.
I'm adding him to the meeting right now, and he should be able to turn on his camera and speak.
Right.
Can you hear me?
I can, if you'll speak a little louder.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm Bob Dallas, I live on 1445 Valley View Road. And I just want to briefly talk about the improvements to Mount Vernon. One, thank you, it's a great corridor that connects Gwinnett-Fulton right through Dunwoody. And what's neat about it, though, is that in addition to putting in a multi-use trail, I would suggest that it'd be a good idea to put in a bike lane. And here's why I say that. First, it's a ridge road, which is an easy way of saying it's a flatter road. So a lot of cyclists ride that road that go pretty fast. And if they're constrained to go on a multi-use path, which includes, you know, kids learning how to ride a bike, people who are just doing it for leisurely travel, there's conflict, and pedestrians especially. And I say that as past share of Peds. You know, we like multi-use trails, but when fast bikes go by you, it's not the best set of circumstances. Secondly, by putting in a bike lane, you are really encouraging an alternative use. Think about all the activity centers that Mount Vernon encompasses. City Springs to perimeter, to Dunwoody Village, to the Jet Ferry area, all the way to the things that Gwinnett County is going over on its side of the border. So I would just suggest that as you make your deliberations and consider how Mount Vernon can work for all of us, it's one of our most traveled roads, but the improvements that are being made are going to make it a lot safer. And I submit, if you add the bike lane, it makes it not only safer, but more usable for more people. So with that, I just want to say a thank you to each of you for what you do, and I'm sure you made a great decision. So thank you all.
Thank you. Ginger?
If anyone else would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Next, we have the Sustainability Hero Awards that are going to be presented by our sustainability chairperson. And he's going to give a brief introduction of our first recipient. And then Sharon, will you read the proclamation when Nathan finishes? Is that good with you, Nathan?
That's excellent.
Okay. All right, thank you, Nathan Sparks, for serving as Chair of our Sustainability Commission, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. This is about the 10th year that we're going to be recognizing sustainability heroes in Dunwoody. We celebrate their service and their dedication to sustainable practices. The first recipient is for the individual. Patty Baker, who helped chair the first commission of the Sustainability Group, is a leader in Dunwoody. She is tireless in her efforts to promote sustainable actions and improvements to the community. She's a vocal advocate, does a blog, and she really embraces alternative forms of transportation. And she encouraged me to bike ride here today, not by her request, but by her example. I'm a little winded for that. Ms. Baker served again as the initial years in cityhood and ensured that we looked at the policies of our city to make sure that it is a sustainable place to live, where we can bike and we can walk safely. And all of this has manifested through time. She actually is very involved with gardening and promotes sustainable gardening in the community, including donations to Malachi's Pantry Storehouse. So with that, Patty is on Zoom.
Right, I'm gonna, Sharon's gonna read the proclamation, and then we'll hear from Ms. Baker. Whenever you're ready, Sharon.
Okay, mayor, I'm ready. Proclamation. Whereas the City of Dunwoody Sustainability Committee serves to encourage our community to reduce its environmental impact by providing assistance and public education and outreach on sustainability. And whereas at the core of this mission is our commitment to define sustainable practices and to demonstrate them by honoring those who are most dedicated to reducing our community's environmental footprint. And whereas the Sustainability, the Sustainable Hero of the Year Award initiated in 2012 is given to one exemplary individual recognized by the committee, mayor, and council in our city for their dedication, service, and leadership in sustainable practices. And whereas Patty Baker has been a passionate and recognizable leader in Dunwoody for her generous donation of her time and resources and her energetic and tireless efforts to promote sustainable actions and local and regional improvements in the city, in the Dunwoody community. And whereas Patty has been an organizational and vocal advocate for alternative forms of transportation within the city, leading by example by using her bicycle as her primary form of carbon-free transportation in Dunwoody, and was recently selected as the Bikes Metro Atlanta Bicycle Mayor. And whereas Patty served on the Sustainability Commission during Dunwoody's initial years of cityhood, where she made an indelible mark in ensuring bicycling and pedestrian-friendly policies were priorities for the group. And whereas Patty promotes urban harvesting by growing vegetables on her property and donating most of them to local non-proper, and maintains a sharing garden where anyone can pick fresh vegetables and learn the value of growing one's own food. And whereas Patty is a daily force for change and consistently displays passion while generating and implementing ideas for improvement and teaching others in order to improve awareness, attitudes, and behavior to drive sustainable best practices in Dunwoody. Now therefore, I, Lynn Deutsch, Mayor of Dunwoody, do hereby proclaim Monday, April 12th, 2021, as Patty Baker Day in honor of her service to the City of Dunwoody and the community as the 2020 Sustainable Hero.
Thank you, and congratulations, Patty. So now, Mr. Sparks, you can turn the floor over to Ms. Baker.
Ms. Baker, would you please make a few brief remarks?
Yes. This award is beautiful and really thoughtfully designed, and it was a really lovely surprise. And I want to personally thank all of you at City Hall for everything that you're doing to make our city more resilient. Now more than ever, we can see how important that is. And it's really great to see that the seeds that we've planted over the years have grown. So a special thank you to the Sustainability Committee for keeping this effort going and this focus over these years and continuing to have those 7:30 AM meetings. I see that that has sustained as well. And as always, let me know if there's anything I can do to help. You know where I am, and I'm happy to offer anything that I can, so thank you all.
Thank you, Patty, and again, congratulations.
And there I will read the second proclamation now.
No, actually, Mr. Sparks is going to give a brief introduction to the next participant, and then you can read it. Thank you.
I will, and why don't I go ahead and invite Juliette Cohen to come up? She is the Executive Director of the Chattahoochee River Keepers. And the River Keepers have been a faithful supporter of our waterways, providing education to our committee, but also support with the testing of water samples. And Michael Collin is here, and he's been a big advocate of that as well. He got me involved with that. And we actually just learned today that we test the waterway north of Murphy Cammer Park and south of Murphy Cammer Park. So we've got that covered. Thank you for being here and for all of your support. We'll read the proclamation.
Sharon, now you can read the proclamation, please.
Okay. Proclamation. Whereas the City of Dunwoody Sustainability Committee serves to encourage our community to reduce its environmental impact by providing assistance and public education and outreach on sustainability. And whereas at the core of the mission is their commitment to define sustainable practices and to demonstrate them by honoring those who are most dedicated to reducing our community's environmental footprint. And whereas the Sustainable Hero Organization of the Year Award is given to one exemplary organization or business recognized by the committee, mayor, and council in our city for their dedication, service, and leadership in sustainable practices. And whereas the Chattahoochee River Keeper actively engages in educating the community and advocating for sustainable practices. And whereas the Chattahoochee River Keeper has partnered with the Sustainability Committee over the past three years to perform weekly water quality testing for Dunwoody's entire watershed. And whereas the Chattahoochee River Keeper and its network of dedicated volunteers have analyzed the results of Dunwoody's water quality testing and posted them to their public website to provide education and information to the community. And whereas the Chattahoochee River Keeper continues to investigate problematic results and successfully resolved at least three sewer leaks so far, helping to keep Dunwoody residents safe and protect clean water in the Chattahoochee River. And whereas the Chattahoochee River Keeper remains committed to making the city a more sustainable and environmentally friendly community and being a local champion for clean, plentiful water throughout Dunwoody. Now therefore, I, Lynn Deutsch, Mayor of Dunwoody, do hereby proclaim Monday, April 12th, as Chattahoochee River Keeper Day in honor of the organization's service to the City of Dunwoody and the community as the 2020 Sustainable Hero Organization of the Year.
Nathan, can you do me a favor and speak into the microphone, please? Okay.
Juliette, thank you, here's your award, and we'd love for you to make a few remarks.
Thank you, Nathan, and Michael, and the Sustainability Committee of the City of Dunwoody, and of course, the mayor and council, this is such a great honor. I am the Executive Director of Chattahoochee River Keeper. We are celebrating our 27th year. You should know that Dunwoody is part of a basin-wide weekly water testing program. We are testing at 195 stream and river locations from Clarksville to Columbus. So we test nearly 250 miles of the Chattahoochee watershed and lots of tributaries and lakes in between. Over the course of this program, which actually started in 2010, I think we have found and stopped over 100 sewer spills. So it's a great program, and we are pleased to have the support of the Sustainability Committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll just make one other quick remark. Earth Day is April 22nd. And this is an inspiring, two individuals that can help us all do things to improve sustainability practices in our own lives and for our cities. So with that in mind, get on your bike, it's a beautiful day. And then also, we will be doing a recycling event, thanks to the city and your support of that. So recycle weekly your household things, and then your hazardous waste and your e-waste, store it for our next event. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Nathan, and congratulations again to our recipients. Next up, Chief Grogan, would you like to introduce our next, no, okay. Chief Fulham, would you like to join us with whoever you brought with us, with you up here? We have a presentation from DeKalb County Fire and EMS.
Good evening.
Will you do me a favor and just speak into the microphone? Thank you because of technology, thank you.
Yes. Well, good evening once again to the mayor and to the council. My name is Darnell Fulham, once again, I'm the Fire Chief for DeKalb County Fire Rescue. And with me, I have Chris Valentine. He is the Director, give your title.
I'm the Regional Director for GMR Global Micro Response.
Which includes AMR. And so this evening, I was asked to give an update on the EMS services. And so I thought it was important, really, to go back to the beginning, if you will, of the contract when we created the new contract at the beginning of 2020. And so with that being said, immediately after signing the contract, we started meeting in January of 2020. And the immediate meetings were to really establish the baseline for the new programs that we were going to bring onboard. You may recall that part of that contract, part of the contract was for an agency to give us innovative ideas. And so we wanted to make sure that we were not only dealing with the response times from a point of adding more units, but we were also looking for innovative ways to address it. And so, as you were all familiar, COVID hit us in March. And I don't say that lightly, it did hit us all, and we immediately started focusing on COVID. And for the fire department and for the EMS system as a whole, it was important for us to switch over to the knowns and the unknowns. And so some of the items that we immediately started doing was we increased, or we thought that there would be an increase in call volume for those that were infected and then for those that were experiencing symptoms. We knew there was going to be PPE shortages, that was all over the news. We were considering staffing shortages due to our members possibly being infected and possibly having family members that they had to care for. We were also concerned about the fact that regional hospitals and the EMS system overall would be overwhelmed. And that was partially because of what we were witnessing on the news from those areas that were immediately affected by COVID. And so our immediate actions were to purchase PPE to initiate new protocols for COVID patients. We knew that making contact with those patients, this was, once again, a virus that was unknown. We did not know exactly what that contact may look like. So we were prepared to be in full PPE at that time. We implemented a new protocol, it's called Protocol 36. And what that does, it allows us, if need be, to respond. In other words, if the pandemic would have truly been an outbreak in our area and we were unable to respond to all the calls because the hospitals were overwhelmed, the EMS service would have been overwhelmed, then we would have had to change the way we respond. And the Protocol 36 is a national protocol that's used to make those changes. Also, we established weekly meetings with our AMR partner. And those continued, well, actually, we have gone to every other week now, but those started immediately when the pandemic occurred. We met weekly to talk about the challenges and the concerns that may have been occurring in the system. So I'll tell you, initially, interestingly enough, we saw actually a decrease in call volume. And you probably know the reasons why, but part one of them was that individuals stopped calling 911. They were apprehensive about going to the hospitals. And so we saw a decrease, but that didn't last very long. As soon as the spike started, and if you remember, late summer into the fall into the winter, call volume started to go back up to about normal. But the bigger impact that we saw is the wall time at the hospitals. And you probably have heard us talk about the wall times before, but I will explain them very quickly. When a person is transported to a hospital, obviously, the next step is to have that patient go through the intake process at the hospital and be assessed by the doctors. What was happening, and once again, this was something that's been on the news quite a bit, I believe, is ambulances were getting to the hospital and were unable to unload those patients. And so you would literally have ambulances stacked up at the hospitals trying to unload patients. And so, though, once again, call volume went down, it started to get back up to what we would have been considering the normal pre-COVID. The fact that now we're experiencing up to 45 minutes, an hour, and even during spikes sometimes, we saw hour and a half for unloading a patient at the hospital. Some of the complaints I was getting at that point were actually family members who arrived at the hospital and their pet and their family member wasn't yet off the ambulance because they were not able to go into the hospital. So with all of that happening, fire, and I'm going to speak about fire, I'll let Chris speak about AMR from this point of view. But fire rescue, we saw over 200 positives throughout our ranks. And we have had over 500 individuals that have been quarantined and isolated. And the key point to that is you all recall, all of our firefighters are trained to the level of EMT. Many of them are paramedics. And if there is an emergency that warrants a quick response, then our fire trucks will respond to those calls. And so in many cases, they were making contact with patients and in some cases, may have contracted COVID through those incidents. So what I'll get to now is some of those items that we did during this time of COVID. And I think it's very important to point this out. We did not just sit back and deal with COVID during this time. We kept moving forward through the advancements that had been articulated, once again, through the contract. The fire department ourselves, we stood up an EMS division. And you may have heard me talk about this before, but we had purchased ambulances, and we staffed those ambulances last year. So we've hired over 30 paramedics, we have 30 positions, but we've hired over 30, some have left. But we currently have three of those ambulances in operation right now. And they're strategically stationed throughout the county. We hope to soon get up to five of those units being in service. They run 24/7. And the way that we operate them, and I'll give an example that happened here in Dunwoody later on, but those units serve a few purposes. One, if there's a fire, we always send at least two ambulances to a fire. One is for the possible patients who may have been impacted by the fire, but we also send one for our firefighters. And so we're sending DeKalb County Fire ambulances to those calls now so that the AMR units don't have to stand by, because that's what they're doing. And in some of those incidents, it can be a very long time. The other item that I'll speak to is that we also received a grant during this time to hire 30 more firefighters. And so those firefighters are now onboard, they're being trained. You may be very familiar with Station 21 here, where we actually added to the equipment that was located at that station, those rapid-response vehicles, you may see them running around here sometimes, but the smaller truck. We now have all 10 of those in service. And they really do help to mitigate some of the low acuity calls that may not require the larger fire truck. They can get there and then also possibly relieve the ambulance from having to respond. And that's what they're there for, that's part of their job. During the, well, during, let's see, 15 months, the last 15 months, we've responded to over 11,000 COVID-related calls. And we call them COVID-related because in some cases, they're flu-like symptoms. We don't always know the outcome of the patient. But that was on top of all of the calls that we responded to last year, which was 88,000 calls throughout the county. Also, last year, we hired a new EMS director. We're very proud to have Dr. Carr, who comes from Emory. He's really assisting us, not only internally with the department, but he's a bridge to AMR when we have. When we have any issues related to protocols or any of those type of incidents, he's able to, to assist us and he's doing a great job there. So at this point, I'm going to bring up Chris and let him speak about some of the enhancements that are in place right now. And I think you'll be excited about some of these because they are not only first in the state, but some of them are one of the few in the nation, programs.
Good evening. Again, it's Chris Valentine, GMR Global Macro Response Regional Director. Okay. How's this? Thank you. First of all, I just want to give, you know, general recognition to the efforts of, you know, DeKalb County Fire Department and also the first responders over the last year in 2020. You know, it was a kind of a, they played a critical role last year with COVID-19. Of all the challenges that Chief Fulham has spoken to. But more, most importantly, it allowed us to, you know, navigate and partner collaboratively to continue the transition into the new contract. Those processes still continued throughout the year while all these agencies were battling COVID-19. And we still provided excellent care for the citizens of DeKalb County. But it also showed that the, under this, our EMS systems across the country, not in just DeKalb, is under extreme pressures due to this. And we, we as GMR and partner with DeKalb County, we fully recognize that we, we need new, new approaches to investments, innovations, and working with our frontline leaders. Because as we rolled into this contract and these, these action plans were going forward, COVID-19 kind of transformed those plans. And we could, we had to rapidly change our plans. I'm not kind of go more deeper than that, but we had to make some, some, some changes through it. So today, I just wanted to focus on kind of the transition plan with the partnership that we've established. Kind of wanted to touch on some three key areas tonight. One is investments and new infrastructure and technology and our innovative systems, staffing, training, expanding our DeKalb County workforce. And finally, I'd like to share about a recent response that we had in DeKalb County that demonstrates the kind of the partnership between the two agencies, how we actually saved a life. So that's the end result. So the first thing we kind of did as we transitioned into the plan is we opened our Brookhaven EMS station. That's located in the city of Brookhaven off of Beaufort Drive. It used to be a QT, I believe, they can, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. They converted it into, from a QT, converted it to a, what we call EMS hub. Today, I believe around May of last year, we started deploying ambulance at that substation. So the advantage is that is now instead of having all of our eggs in one basket, where we had all of our ambulances deployed from Stone Mountain. Now we have some ambulances coming out of Brookhaven. And we have some ambulances coming, obviously, out of Stone Mountain. And we actually have some ambulances are deployed from actually the, from the county fire station. So it's a very mixed model. So it's very state-of-the-art. We also do, you know, training out of their community services that we haven't done it yet, but that's our goal is to do community services out of there after COVID-19 is over and all the social distancing over. And that's another piece we would like to do for the community, you know, to stop the bleed, CPR training and other training to the community. And the next thing we, we did was we moved on to nurse navigation. Nurse navigation went actually live in DeKalb County Fire Dispatch in October. If you're not familiar with that program, nurse navigation is another tool for the 911 dispatcher. When they go through their processes, they call PROQA, the questions, and asking some key questions and determining what type of response that the county should respond on. They determine it's a low acuity call and the, in the RP or the customer doesn't really need a full response. They can push it over to a nurse that's in our call centers. We have one located in Texas. Well, a nurse could go online and give advice, basically, and kind of talk to them how to, how to serve you better ways by, from education or what to do. So some of the stats that we have from that, from this investment, we already handled over 15, 1,500 calls were sent to nurse navigation. That since then, we intercept 30% of them, ending the self-care referral to a clinic. And this is basically allowing us to partner with urgent cares and using, we also partner with Lyft. Where if you don't need an ambulance, you just need a ride somewhere where Lyft will be dispatched to whatever, pick you up and take you to the urgent care. So that takes pressure off the EMS system. By having nurse navigation, it allowed us to move to another program that CMS has implemented across the country, which is ET3. It's Emergency Alternative Locations where ambulances necessarily don't have to go to an emergency room on low-acuity calls. It allows, by doing that, DeKalb County was the actual first county in Georgia, in, in the states, to actually go live first. We did a pilot program first to kind of work out all the kinks and all the issues and all the technology issues and all the learning curves. And obviously, we, we learned from that. So by, you know, we partnered with Peachtree Urgent Care as an alternative destination. We also partnered with Division Healthcare and E Business for Treatment Place Solutions. And by my, we were going to have telemedicine incorporated on that. So where a crew can have a laptop on scene and be live video with a physician online. So this will help us, you know, handle a little more lower-acuity calls. The benefit is we'll keep our emergency ambulances available on higher-acuity calls. So we're still working on that project. We're transitioning, we also transitioned to another product that sits in the comm center. That's called Optima Live. It's an analytic tool. It looks at deployment of, of our system from ambulance deployment. And we put in roughly around three years of historical data in DeKalb County. We put it behind the scenes, so it starts looking at analytics and it looks at call demands. When time starts getting busy, when you start looking at traffic flows, then it starts recommending kind of look ahead for the 911 dispatcher, how to move your ambulance's resources appropriately, right? So you can start anticipating some things. So we just, just turned that on just recently, end of February. And it's still a learn, a huge learning curve from the dispatcher perspective and even from the data perspective, behind the scenes, we're still analyzing the data so how we can make further system enhancements. So it's still kind of work in progress. We kind of, kind of have to let the data run. And kind of, kind of watch it very closely. And obviously, we want to make enhancements. That's the whole idea of this. But it's something that doesn't happen overnight. So this is something that we will be working together and collaborative with the DeKalb County Fire Department and the AMR team will be working hand in hand to continue that. So our next piece that's, that's, that's key is our, our staffing and protocol. So Dr. Carr has implemented a new medical protocol in the county, which is some enhancements. We trained all 400 caregivers in just a matter of a couple of months. We also trained our partners, that's in the community, which is AmeriPro. We also added an additional, what we call a captain, but lack of better terms, is a supervisor to the system on all of our shifts. So we have an extra leader running the system in DeKalb County. So that's, that's, that's very helpful. We also have a, what do you call a, kind of a liaison in the DeKalb County Fire Dispatch Center, where that person can interact with the, the leadership team, the dispatchers and get, you know, an AMR supervisor or leader and to, to kind of help the system flow a lot better. Just kind of take that workload off. So we, we're seeing some of those enhancements move forward. Another, another big piece that our organization has recognized is that in the, in the, in the, especially in the state of Georgia, there's a shortage of EMS caregivers. It's well-known, it's well-documented. Everyone kind of has the same story. So we kind of had to start thinking outside the box to get things done, right? So the big thing we do is for our employees in DeKalb and all, our, our sister companies around DeKalb, we did a wage adjustment for them. So we gave them significant increases to our, our workforce. And by doing that, we're also creating career paths for our workforce. So if you're what they call an EMT basic, you can move into an advanced. Our organization is going to be giving the employee, you know, funding the education for them to go to school so they can advance their career to an advanced. Then we're also going to give them, when they're done completing that, when they're proficient, we're going to move them to a paramedic. So we'll, we'll again, give money, pay for the funding and the support to get them into a paramedic program. And that's what we call our sponsorship program. The next piece that we felt was really important to really kind of start very young in the workforce and get people out of high school into EMS. So we kind of started a program called Earn While You Learn. And it kind of speaks for itself. So we'll, we, we just, we're hiring people that have no credentials, have no EMS background, that want to get an EMS. We're going to pay them their honorary rate to go to school, to obtain their EMTB. And it's going to be fully funded by AMR. And they'll go through our sponsorship program. The end result is to become a paramedic. So we're creating that workforce development. And we're hiring, especially in the community of DeKalb County, which is highly important to me. And I'd like just to kind of finally kind of share with you all the work that we have done with DeKalb County, kind of a story that kind of brings us all together. And this is why we're here. And this is why the things that we were talking about today is, you know, on March 13th, DeKalb County Fire Squad 16 and AMR 47 responded to a home to a 67-year-old female experiencing severe blood loss from a dialysis graft. Upon arrival to the scene, the patient was severely bleeding. And the responders, 13-year-old and 15-year-old grandsons took, took turns applying pressure to her wound and slowed the loss of blood. And they obviously called 911 for help. It was clear to the responding crews that's quick intervention will be to the young teens and the heroics, helping us, helping their grandparents alive until DeKalb County Fire got on scene and AMR medics could be on scene. Once the crew were on scene, the medics took over and transported the woman to the hospital where she made a full recovery. This Thursday, 11:00 a.m., we are going to recognize the local teenage boys for their heroics. And also, it'd be the first time that the woman and the young teen and their family reunited to the first responders that helped save her life. So kind of this story, this kind of reminds us how important our first responders are each, each day as they illustrate the progress we made together over the last year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, with that being said, you heard about some of the advancements. And I want to thank you. I saw that you were quoted in the article about the nurse navigation system. And he spoke also about Optima Live. One reality that we realize is that we're not seeing the real benefit of this yet. With, with COVID in place, I mentioned before that not all the calls that go through the nurse navigation end up going to a urgent care because urgent cares won't accept them. We, we realize even with Optima Live, he mentioned three years of data, but it could not have reflected what took place last year. So we continue to work. We're continuing to make strides. I'm very proud of the fact that the nurse navigation, I think we're one of six, six agencies that are operating NurseNav. He mentioned the ET3. We're one of three in the state that received permission to start that program, the, the pilot program. So there's a lot of things happening in the system. I really look forward to what's going to happen post-COVID. We're all concerned what post-COVID is going to look like, but I'm excited about the programs we have in place. I think it's going to benefit the system overall as we continue pushing forward. And I would like to also, because I spent some time with you out on the call, I was going to speak just about Dunwoody Crossing. And, and that's an incident that ties into EMS. During that call, we had over 70 personnel that were on that scene. We had 29 fire units and EMS units. And there were seven, excuse me, six EMS units that either were standing by or transported. As you may recall, we had a female who was actually going in labor, who had to be transported from the area. So it's an example of what can happen, how dynamic an EM system, EMS system can be. When needed be, it's going to expand as it needs to expand. However, we know that right now, not only in DeKalb County in Georgia, but in the nation, hospitals and EMS systems are truly being tested. And so, once again, I'm very proud of where we stand today with what we've been able to do in the midst of the, the pandemic. Thank you.
Okay. I think we probably have some questions. Anybody have questions? John?
Thank you, Chief. The biggest problem that I think I heard you say was the hold time of the ambulances at the hospitals. What are we doing regarding that? What are we doing, thinking outside the box? What, what can we do to release those ambulances to get them back on the streets? Because that seems to be the biggest problem. And I haven't heard you address how that's going to be.
Yes. And, and it's a great question. So immediately what we started doing is actually sending supervisors to the hospitals. And so what can be done when you have a patient? And mind you, that the patients that are in the ambulances, for the most part, are not going to be high acuity. They're low acuity. They're, the hospital feels somewhat comfortable with the patient remaining there. So in those cases, AMR has sent their supervisors, who can actually take responsibility for more than one patient and monitor those patients until they get a room and they can be sent or released. So that can release the ambulance back to the system, but that supervisor is monitoring more than one patient. Also, Dr. Carr, and I keep mentioning his name, but we, we also deploy him when needed. Anytime we have an incident, I get a page, no matter what time of day, what time of night. If, if we're starting to have a situation where we don't have ambulances available, I get pages. Some of my folks get them as well. And we immediately start making calls. He'll call the hospitals, actually, and try to free up some bed spaces necessary, find out what's going on. Once again, this is not just a DeKalb problem. If you, I have some data that shows even where individuals are transported from, whether they're in Dunwoody or any part of the county. But we know the hospitals that typically will start stacking up patients. However, a patient is the one who determines what hospital they go to, unless they're in a very serious condition and can't make that decision. So in some cases, even when a hospital is, is saying they're on diversion, if a patient wants to go there, the patient will be transported. So that's some of the immediate things. We're also talking to Region 3, who is the local office for, for EMS. And we're talking about this issue because, once again, we're not alone in this. All of the agencies are facing the same problems. How do we resolve it? Many times, I'll say this one last point, but what many times we found is sometimes it's not even bed space. It's just simply that they are being impacted by staffing shortages. And so they don't have enough nurses or doctors maybe on hand to see all those patients coming in.
Thank you. Again, it really rolls back down to the nine-minute response time. And we see the stats and you're not always hitting those metrics. And I just want to make sure that you're doing everything you can. At one point, you were talking about GIS-ing and every vehicle to know where it's at. We do. Try to make sure that you're pushing vehicles. If something is stuck, you're pushing it back. That's being done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And that, the, all of our trucks, all of the ambulances and all of the fire trucks have AVL. So there's an important point about that, if you'll allow me. But if there's a call that comes in, let's say on 285, which that happens many times a day. Though the ambulance that maybe is at Station 21 or, or Station 18 is in-house, if there's an ambulance that's actually closer, and that can happen, they may be coming back from the hospital, that ambulance will go to the call. So the closest ambulance is always going to be the one. So the closest ambulance is always going to be the one that responds to the call. Um, so the AVL does work and part of the, uh, Optima Live is trying to post the units throughout the county uh, to make sure that they're as close as they can be to where we would expect the calls to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Chief, yeah, thank you for your time here. I appreciate the information. Um, would you be able to provide us this, both of your reports in writing, if you have electronic format?
Yes, sir. I have mine in notes, but I can, I can definitely provide.
That's all, because you both had great, tons of great information provided. Thanks. That would be my first one. Um, and just to save you time, instead of you going out briefing each municipality, if it's just a takeaway, more of a comment than a question, but if you just give a, an overall, do you brief the other municipalities, say one fell swoop, um, municipality slash county? Uh, if, do you offer that as well? Then we could all just chime in and be available.
Yes, sir.
On a recurring basis or?
I do not, just because they haven't asked. Um, but it, it's interesting and I know we, we point to COVID so much these days, right? But one idea that we wanted to do when we signed a new contract, we said, once we get beyond uh, really that transition period and had things stood up is we wanted to bring all of the cities together and create the county and really dive into how the service works. And, and I think it's important, you know, the nurse navigation system and all these things because we, we also want you to be the advocate that says that, you know, this system, when you dial nine one one, um, will help you, um, possibly saving time and money. But, um, but we want to do that. We want to have, you know, something where, where you can actually put your hands on, uh, some of the equipment and all of those things. I think you were talking more about a report, but I'm maybe going a little further, but you, you know, I think it's important for, um, for, for you all, the elected bodies to understand how that system truly works, why a fire truck does show up and, and what they can do, um, when maybe an ambulance hasn't arrived yet. So.
Sure, absolutely. Um, and just a couple of others. So you understand our unique geography and of course our chief growing everything. You know, if you're looking at a map, we've got Fulton County, we have going out right out here too. So what happens, maybe this is more, I think of the policing side where we have this joint, you know, hey, different governmental agreements. Everybody helps everybody else out. The, the, is there reciprocal arrangements for up in the Panhandle there between Fulton and then you're around on Winter Chapel? So they get confused which municipality, which jurisdiction to cover for that? Um, how, how does that work today?
So I, I think there's two questions there and let me know if I'm on, on point, but the, as it relates to, um, mutual aid is what we call it in the fire business. I think they call it in police as well. But, uh, we do have mutual aid. So if a call is made from a home or made from a cell phone and it goes through, uh, chat com and it's recognized as a, as a Dunwoody address, then you will get DeKalb County Fire, you will get AMR, uh, from the DeKalb County system. But if there is a need for mutual aid, I know this weekend it happened actually where there was a time where we had a spike, it appeared to be a spike and, uh, we were, we didn't have any units available. So there were calls made to the North Fulton, uh, uh, zone, which is, happens to be AMR as well, but it's a different unique zone and they sent units over to help cover, uh, until, you know, we could recover from the spike. And so also, uh, Chris mentioned the company, uh, that they have on a contract that also provides ambulances as well uh, to augment their services when needed. So they have a contracting company subcontract with an ambulance company.
Thanks. Uh, the last question, Chris, um, not to put you on the spot a moment, but how is your turnover percentage? You, you look at the quality of people that are doing the care, um, you know, what's the average tenure of your EMTs in the force? What's your turnover? What's your vacancy rate? Kind of sort of look like, I know I might, might not have that off the top of your head, but those are important to know if these folks have been on staff for a while and they're, they're, you know, I don't know if you have that information now or you could potentially show that that'd be something to know in the future.
That's good information. I, I didn't do a deep dive on those statistics. Um, but what I can assure to you, we, we do have, um, you know, workforce development where we're plus. So a year from now, we're up, um, roughly around, I believe, you know, when we look at the data, I don't want to It's fine. False information, but again, we're, we're focusing on retention in our employees today. And that's why we did the wage adjustment to, to retain those employees. So I'll tell you, there was a lot of employees anecdotally that I saw because we, our top pay is a little over thirty dollars an hour. So that kind of hits the, the chart because they're highly compensated employees. So we had a lot of those folks in DeKalb County.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have several short, you're going to think they're very random questions, but as I was listening to your reports, I jotted them down. Um, Chief, how's the vaccine rate for firefighters and I guess for EMR too, or are we?
Okay. Yeah. And I'm glad to talk about that. Um, I can tell you what we know for fire is about thirty-five percent. That's what we know. Uh, we know that there are individuals who are receiving their vaccine on their own. Uh, we were very proud of the fact that, uh, DeKalb County, uh, Fire, we gave the vaccine to not only our own folks, to EMS, but we also gave it to, uh, public safety, uh, throughout the county. And so, um, so, but what we know is thirty-five percent, I'm pretty sure we're somewhere around forty or so percent. With those ones that we don't know that did it on their own.
My next random question is for you, Chris. Oh, yeah. Well, I, I, go ahead.
To answer that question, we're kind of separate, uh, different position than, uh, AMR didn't re, didn't get re-seized under a private company from the federal government. Luckily, you know, DeKalb County partnered with, that's where we allowed to vaccinate some of our employees, but it was a volunteer base. We couldn't enforce policies, even collect that data because that, you know, HIPAA requirement. So we're very hopeful that a lot of our workforce is vaccinated. Um, what I can share with you, I don't want to jinx myself. It's been, you know, probably since late January, our last employee went out on COVID nineteen. So there was times last year where we had huge numbers of our workforce out on COVID nineteen. So you see the numbers really decreased. Probably one reason they got sick, we had over five hundred employees get sick in the state of Georgia. That's not all at DeKalb County. It's all just, all of our employees in Georgia. Um, but we're, we're believing the vaccinations are working and there's other agencies around here that we also partner with to get the vaccination. So I'm very hopeful that our workforce is getting vaccinated.
Um, like this actually is also for you, Chris. You mentioned when you were talking about your wages and what you're doing. You said your partner AmeriPro. What is that?
So per the, the contract, we had to have a small business partner in the contract. So we subcontracted to meet those requirements, a company called AmeriPro. So they also provide ambulance service in, in DeKalb County.
Just, just to be clear, they, they had to have a ambulance company that was part of their contract agreement so that there would be that mutual aid available. So that's what AmeriPro serves.
Thank you. I understand that now. And my last little one is, so if I break my leg and I say, well, I want to go to Northside, but you, the ambulance drivers know that it's on diversion and I'm going to be sitting there an hour. Do you try and talk me out of it or do you just take me?
So I, I would, we probably could both speak to that because, so I can tell you that the firefighters who arrive on scene, you know, and oftentimes they may be there before the ambulance gets there. If they're aware that a hospital's on diversion, they're going to let you know. Uh, they're going to tell you ultimately it is your choice, but, um, they're going to tell you that, look, you may find yourself sitting there for quite a while, um, because they're on diversion. But the term diversion in Georgia, there's not really an official, uh, way for a hospital to say they won't take any more patients. So that's where it gets back to, if, if you show up on the ramp, um, they have to take you. Just may take a while to get you in the door. So if you want to speak to.
Thank you. I just, just to be, I can chief fall in is, I think the key thing that we try to do as providers is really try to educate the public. We're not saying, no, you're not going or yes, you're going. It's just to provide the education so that the customer can make an educational informed decision with what they want to do. So.
And again, thank you for your time. And I know I have two pages of notes and like obviously came up with a few questions, but I truly do appreciate your time and information because I think the more that the public hears it and the nurse security and, and all that, like the, the better we're all served. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just real quick, my questions were answered by several, uh, council folks here, but I wanted to say thank you, Chief. And thank you, Chris, for coming tonight. My first, I think it was my second meeting as a council member, uh, was back in twenty fifteen and we had a report from AMR and it was terrible. It was so bad. Remember that one? And, and John, I mean, I think the closest ambulance was on Pinola Way to us here in Dunwoody. And, um, I think Chief, you might've been here that night too. So hearing this tonight, I know this is great stuff. I took a lot of notes as well. And so I just wanted to say, thank you. Thank you so much. This is, this is night and day news. This is good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I, I just want to echo some of the, the comments that John made. Um, a lot, a lot of the other things have been addressed. Um, you know, the response times remain a concern. I do appreciate, uh, you guys being here tonight and your reports and everything you're doing. And especially the frontline workers that are out there taking care of things. Uh, but, um, you know, the response times are not getting any better. And granted, we've dealt with unprecedented challenges this past year, but you know, whether it's traffic or wall times or staff turnover, if that's your loved one laying on the floor that needs emergency medical care, whatever the reason is not important. You need emergency care and you need it fast. Um, and I, I, I'm just, I remain concerned that we're not doing enough to improve those response times. And, you know, one of the things that I saw when we get the, the monthly reports, uh, is one of the, the things that I noticed is how many of the, the calls are originating outside of Dunwoody. And I was just able to pull one up here just randomly, uh, the December thirty-one percent of the, uh, were originated outside of the city. And so we have dedicated vehicles here. Why are so many of our calls being responded to from outside units? It appears that has to be contributing to the, the longer, uh, response times.
Yes. So, and, uh, what you're speaking to is the part of the, the, um, report that we outline which unit responded to the actual incident. And so, um, there's a dynamic that exists there. So station twelve, um, is, is the least busy station for us in DeKalb County. Um, and you probably can understand why it's bedroom community for the most part. But you, if you look at your chart, almost every month, it's one of the busier units for the city. And so the dynamic that's happening here is once the one at station twenty-one, let's say over here on Crown gets a call, if it goes to the hospital and sits there for, for plus thirty minutes really, um, then the next call that comes in is going to be station twelve, if it's the closest. If it's not the closest, if there was a unit that let's say just left from over there at the hospitals and it was on, uh, two eighty-five, if that unit was the closest unit, that's the unit that's going to respond, uh, to the incident. So that's, that's one situation that can occur that the units here, when you, when you first start, before you hit go, they're all in their locations, but as soon as they start transporting, then they're in the system, they're going to hospitals. If somebody decided they wanted to go to Grady from station twelve, that unit's taking them to station Grady. Oh, excuse me, to Grady Hospital. So the next unit that comes in is going to be a unit from outside the, the, the count, or excuse me, outside the city. Even if they were staged here, we're going to still show you as a unit that was outside of the, the city. So that's one of the dynamics that can happen. The system is constantly moving. Those units, once they transport, have to get back here before they could obviously transport the next call. The other element, and this is just being very transparent, is, is the system is busy with, with more calls happening. Then units start to get rotated around. It's going to take longer for a unit, uh, that goes down to, let's say, uh, the cab general at a certain time of the day to get back up here before, let's say, we would send a unit from, uh, Brookhaven area. So there, there is a lot of dynamics. We show that information. We're, we're really showing, I always say it's for being very transparent. And we show you what reports we, we create. Uh, but it's, it does show that the, um, complexity of the system.
So, um, Chief.
If I may, before you.
Oh, Jim, I'm sorry. You better at it by now. Go ahead, Jim. I'm sorry.
Chief Fulham, Chris, thanks for coming. This is Councilman Jim Reititecher, uh, zooming in for this meeting. Again, thanks for what y'all are doing and thanks for your report. And, um, I guess my, my questions are first, um, you know, I, I, I kind of have some of the same con, um, concerns that Councilman Lambert expressed, and I, I want to, you know, ask you about, you know, the, the current COVID effects because I, I'm looking at the DeKalb Health, um, seven day, um, case report average. And, you know, it certainly reflects, you know, the spike that we saw through the fall and winter, you know, starting in say October and going through early January, where, where, you know, the numbers were big. And I can certainly appreciate you're having to deal with a lot of wall time, uh, with the hospitals. And that's, that's definitely a problem. And I'm not sure what any of us can do, you know, to, to help with that situation. But, you know, the side is since about mid-January, there's been a precipitous decline in the cases, which is a good thing. And I think we can all agree to where the numbers are getting down to about where they were, um, you know, in the early fall, you know, like in the September timeframe. Um, you know, I'm looking at the, the report from last week. I think the new report will come out tomorrow. Um, I'm just curious if you are seeing, um, a reduction in wall time? If your response times are getting closer to being in spec, um, because of the reduction in, in COVID cases that we're seeing in the county?
Yes. So as the, the COVID cases have gone down, one dynamic we've been monitoring is that for a while there, and, and once again, this was reported in the news as well, that the hospital actually had an influx of patients because now those that did not go before were now deciding to go to the hospitals. And, and, you know, it's never one factor. So I'm not pointing just to that one. But we, we have seen, you know, the call volume actually go back up to what we would consider, uh, pre-COVID numbers. Uh, as far as the, um, the amount of transports and what we're seeing in, in the system. But we are still lagging behind in some ways with the, um, with the staffing and, and trying to get back up to the numbers, uh, that, um, we need to be at. So, and when I say we, I'm speaking more from the AMR side. Um, you know, I, I can say this, we've seen probably more firefighters leave in a very short window of time, new firefighters, uh, than I've seen in my thirty-four years. And I relate that to possibly just the stress and, and the fatigue from having to wear a mask all the time, having to, to take all of these extra precautions. And so, um, you know, that would be my conjecture. I, it's a little early to see, we're still, we are hopefully starting to talk about post-COVID and how we're going to recover. But I, I can tell you what we talked about tonight and, and, and trying to get more staff on board will allow, uh, the system to be much more hardy and robust, you know, as we move on from here.
And are you generally staffing that extra ambulance per the IGA or is that sort of going by the wayside?
I hate to ask. So that, yes, sir. That ambulance is being staffed. I was looking at the numbers. We show it on our data. As always, the city center vehicle, when you're looking at your reports. So that unit is being staffed when, when they're able to staff that, that unit, which was the fourth unit in the city. And, and like I said on the report, you always see this city center.
Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. And again, thanks for coming out and. Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. And again, thanks for coming out and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, John. Sorry, Jim.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I just have one follow-up. Tell me about our DeKalb 911 system, where there's a whole lot of calls that we're right on the border. And how is the 911 system working as far as DeKalb is concerned? How are we partnering with Chatcom? How is it working? How are the transfer times? Give me your opinion on where we're at partnering together to keep my community safe.
Yes, I, well, I think 911 is doing a great job. We have a liaison from the fire department that works with 911 on a daily basis. If there's changes that need to be made as far as the EMD system, it's the system that we use, how we triage an EMS call. Their staffing numbers have gone up quite a bit. So I think they're in a much better position as far as having staffing that they need. From what I see with AMR, excuse me, with Chatcom, and I was just on a, on a call with them about a week ago, we have a good partnership with them. I think we've been able to work through some of the, the challenges of transferring calls over. Anytime that we do a inquiry into an incident, we start at the P S app, we start with Chatcom. If it's Chatcom, work our way all the way to the end, to the unit arriving on scene. So if there are gaps that we see, we're able to talk to them directly. So I think that serves well. They use the EMD system as well. So that's important that you're being triaged early so that if, if that care is needed immediately, they transfer it over to DeKalb and that happens. So I think it's working well. And we, we've had a conversation, I think I can openly say this, we've had a conversation about the nurse navigation system.
So just not to interrupt, but I am. Chatcom doesn't have the nurse navigator system. And so Eric Linton is working with the Chatcom apparatus to see about making that happen.
And we had a, a very healthy conversation about how we can make that work. So, you know, I'm anxious to see that be a benefit to the city as well.
Great. Thank you. There was a partnership that we did on Smart 911.
Yes.
And at one point, the cab dropped out of the system. And I'm not sure why. Again, to me, it would seem like it was a beneficial item for our residents to pre-register. So when the phone number pops in, 911 knows exactly who's calling, where you're from, what you're doing, what your address is, who lives at your house and all the rest. But I guess the cab dropped that program. I guess I'm just trying to make sure that, I want to make sure that there was a way that we could partner together. I'm not sure if it makes a whole lot of sense. I guess I'm just worried that when my residents are in DeKalb County, which is just literally blocks away from my house, that if they're in a car accident, your system's not going to know who they are, but if they're in Dunwoody, they will. So I was a little disappointed that you guys dropped the system. Is there any update on that?
I, I don't really have any knowledge of it, other than I do know when the program kicked off in, in DeKalb several years ago.
Right.
And I believe part of the concern was not getting a lot of people applying for it. So maybe the, the case can be made that, you know, the system does work and, and it could be brought back.
It's just those people on the border where it's, goes either way. It's, to me, I see it as beneficial. So thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Any more, any information we can get ahead of time is good to have.
Thank you.
Okay, so me. So on July 30th, at 5:45 in the morning, my husband had a stroke and called 911. Nervous about a lot of different things, including the arrival time. It went smoothly. Your people could not have been more professional. Both Northside and St. Joseph's were on some version of diversion, some version of diversion that rhymes without meaning to. But, um, you know, they said they wanted to go to St. Joseph's and so we went and we followed. And of course, we weren't allowed in. And my son and I sat in the parking lot and watched the ambulance sit and sit and sit. And so, and they were not the only ambulance there. I'm pleased to hear that supervisors, that we have some arrangements. I think that it's critical to have a Metro Atlanta discussion about it. I know Region 3 is, but I think it's a Metro Atlanta issue. At the height of, I looked at the diversion reports every multiple times a day, each time we were in a surge. And I saw that across the state, there were lots of hospitals that were just, they didn't even have beds, probably, and let alone staff in some of those communities. My question though is, is that we were in much better shape with response times at the beginning of 2020. And, you know, I hope that these steps we're taking as we come out of COVID. I, I know that the hospital numbers haven't fallen as much as the case numbers have yet, plus everybody's going to the hospital for all the procedures and treatments they had avoided, that we will work our way back to where we were. We were in a much better position. And I, the other question I had had back in 2019 particularly is, is we have a handful of calls that are outlier calls that really don't look right, and they really play havoc with the data. And I, I feel like in 2021, it's not unreasonable to get more explanation about those because I do know that sometimes it's a data reporting problem. There's lots of different reasons. But if we're going to do honest analysis, we ought to understand. And plus, it might, if you take out calls that you get there and they send you away because they decided to walk to the urgent care or whatever, but your staff doesn't, you know, if we could just get a handle on that, you could pilot it in Dunwoody. You know, you could see if it helps your data. But to me, it seems unlikely that you're having in some months, like this month, I looked at, you know, 12 outlier calls, and we're not hearing from one person complaining about it. And so, you know, somebody, if you're showing calls that are taking 27 minutes to get any kind of service there, I'm betting that's not correct. And so if we could just work to clean up the data as we move out of COVID and with the stuff you're doing, they asked the question in January, it was actually 35% of the calls were answered by vehicles outside of Dunwoody. I appreciated the explanation. The, I'm very interested in your recruiting policies, this, this program to earn while you learn, I think is really important. And I hope you can make DeKalb County Schools a partner with some of this as well. Can you, um, so that's really, I'd like to see us get back to at least closer to where we were. I know you'd like to get us back there as well. I know that in our little world, traffic is not way, any way back to normal, like at perimeter, but 285 and I think are getting back to normal. But it sounds like the biggest problem is the hospital, you know, waiting at the hospital and, and then maybe having to travel to different hospitals. So we'll have you back. And just let us know what we can do for you. But I do, you know, I was optimistic going into 2020 and then COVID kind of ruins everything. And so we look forward to working with you. So as we work our way back to the data points that we were back then.
Understood, Mayor. And for the, the outliers, typically it's a small enough set that we probably can dig into that next level. I, I'll just say too, that we not only do the outliers on the, the high end, but we do them on the low end. So if we have a call that shows one minute response time, we take that out as an outlier. It would mean that they would have to, obviously, sitting on top of the call when it occurred. So some of the outliers will find themselves on the low end where, you know, in the high end, but we, we can't.
Right. But when we look at our report, we have an average for the outliers. And like in this report that I pulled up, it was nearly 30 minutes. And so I'm just, my presumption is, I hope that no one waited 30 minutes for emergency medical service and, and certainly not 15 calls or whatever totaled in this month. So if we, I just think it would help all of us to understand. And then if there's services you need from us, you just let us know because we want to go back to where we were very much. And so. All right. Well, and thank you for your time. Thank you very much. Anybody else have questions? Okay. Thank you. Next up is Linda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We recently were notified that we, by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, were awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting as the City of Dunwoody for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019. Of course, I would like to thank Eric Linton and Jay Benicki, their superior leaders. It, it took a whole bunch of people to do this and the audit committee was involved, the internal auditor, and of course, our outside external auditors, which is Warren Avery. So I also wanted to introduce our team. And while not everybody worked on this financial report, everybody kept all the balls in the air so we could get it done. So this is a very hardworking group. I'm so proud of this team. And this is in no particular order, but I have Assistant Finance Director is Richard Plato. And then Cory Betterson, he is a senior accountant. We have Mr. John Gates, he's the purchasing manager. Danika Williams, she is an accountant. We have Chris Murphy, and he is the risk manager. We also have Dawn Dryden, and she is an accountant as well. Also on our team is Gabrielle McDuffie, and she's not here as well as, she's an accountant. And Susan Austin is the receptionist. We also have just so many great department directors and department participants that helped us gather data and made it all possible. So we're very thankful. And I wanted y'all to see the team and be proud as I am of our team.
And we are. Let's give them a big hand, everybody.
There's, there's Dawn.
Yes, and congratulations. And we appreciate all your hard work. I speak for council when I say, great job. It's always nice to be recognized by our peer, your peers, which then gives us the pride of saying that you've been recognized by your peers. So thank you very much. Thank you all for your hard work for the city.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, can I indulge you for a moment? Maria, would y'all like to come ahead and make the presentation? We won't be able to vote on it until it comes to the business part of the agenda. But that way, if you don't want to stay, you can go ahead and go home because we have two public hearings before we get to the business section. So counsel, this will be in relationship to item 17 on your agenda, I believe. Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and attendees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Maria Barnhart, and I am president of the Dunwoody Women's Club. Joining me in person today is Susan Crawford, immediate past president of the Dunwoody Women's Club, and Beverly Clark, who is our corresponding secretary. I would also like to bring attention to our charter member of the Dunwoody Women's Club, Ms. Ann Bingham. It is an honor to acknowledge Ann, who has been part of this club and volunteered in all of the 47 home tours. Thank you, Ann, for your dedicated service to our club and our community. Thank you all to the club members who are tuning in by Zoom. The purpose of my public comment is to recognize and present our financial donation of $730 to the City of Dunwoody for the purchase of five trees that will be planted in specific locations throughout the city. This is one way we can recognize our 50th anniversary of the Dunwoody Women's Club. This will be a lasting gift for residents and guests to enjoy for years to come. I also want to share a little information that you may not know about the Dunwoody Women's Club, which is a nonprofit service organization with over 90 members. What do the following numbers mean to you? The year 1971, 5,739 hours, and $74,074. 1971, on September the 23rd, 1971, 16 women gathered to discuss the formation of a women's service club in the Dunwoody area. In December of that year, the Dunwoody Women's Club became a reality and was recognized by our national federation. This was the beginning of a legacy of service to Dunwoody and the surrounding area. 5,739 hours is the number of volunteer hours by members of the Dunwoody Women's Club in 2020. $74,074 is the amount of money donated by the club for worthwhile projects during 2020. And yes, navigating the restrictions and safety concerns of our friend, no, COVID-19. How many times have we heard that? Here are some examples of the service projects we did during that time. We made masks for the police department, painted picnic tables for the increase in outdoor dining, painted a mural for a hospital, contributed to food drives, helped with the police department for Christmas for kids, and helped pet rescue groups, just to name a few of our projects. Pretty impressive, right? And that was just for 2020. Don't just take my word for it. We receive appreciation letters from families who have been touched by our charitable work. Consistently, the club receives recognition from our state affiliate, GFWC Georgia, for excellence in service to our community. The Dunwoody Women's Club has been part of this community since 1971. We are a group of women with various skills and abilities that came together to help shed Dunwoody and the surrounding community. The club was a driving force behind the Dunwoody Nature Center, Spruil Center for the Arts, Stage Door Theater, North DeKalb Cultural Arts Center, the First Fourth of July Parade. The club provides college scholarships, support for veterans programs, and support for children's charities, including the Ronald McDonald House. We support a wide variety of charitable organizations that help strengthen our community. The annual Dunwoody Home Tour is a major fundraiser, and it happens in early October and is one of the most anticipated events in the fall. Proceeds from our home tour are used to fulfill the club's commitment to its charitable initiatives. We are proceeding with cautious optimism with our plans for the 48th Annual Home Tour, and we hope to see you there on Wednesday, October the 6th. In closing, the Dunwoody Women's Club has created a legacy of service. We will continue to enhance the lives of others in our community through volunteer service, and we have fun along the way. For more information about our club, go to www.dunwoodywomen'sclub.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to present the check? Okay. Okay. Tom and Cindy. First Dunwoody class.
Thank you all very much. Like I said below, we are very grateful for the service that you provide, not just to Dunwoody, but to beyond, and for the wonderful programming you put on and your charitable deeds. The community would not be the same without you, so thank you.
Mr. Seconder, do you have a... Mr. Seconder, do you have an agenda change?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to remove, under Business Items/Action Items, remove number 16 from the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Sharon, that was moved by Joe, seconded by Pam, and this is because at our Facilities Board meeting before this one, Facilities Authority Board meeting, council elected to purchase, to use the Georgia Municipal Association's lease purchase program to put an offer on or put under contract 4809 and 4819 Vermac Road. The two parcels total around nine and a half acres. With that, is there any discussion on this agenda change? Jim, you okay? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor of the agenda change signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the agenda is changed. Thank you.
Mayor, moving into the public hearing items.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number six is the first read of an ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the City of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances by amending Section 27-87 to adjust requirements for the PD Plan Development District, and Paul Landhart will present.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council members. Let me share my screen here. So, this is the first of two text amendments regarding the PD, the Plan Development District in our zoning code. And I want to give you a brief background, because it's an unusual district, it functions differently than all of other zoning districts. It is a much more customizable zoning district to allow for unique uses and designs. What that means is that instead of submitting a relatively rudimentary zoning plan, an applicant who wants to rezonate the PD district submits an overall development plan that specifies the type and location of users, the intensity of users, it also includes the architectural design and elevations, it also includes circulation and parking plan, and a tree plan and grading plan. So, what you're getting is a much more sort of engineered and designed plan, and it does that because when, the overall development plan can more or less override the zoning district. So, when there is a conflict between the development plan and the zoning ordinance, the ODP governs. And the process functions similar to other rezoning processes, it would be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and then would come to you for overall approval. The big difference is that there are no variants in the PD district, because, as I mentioned, the overall development plan overrides the zoning ordinance. So, in a way, you all would approve the equivalent of variances, you all would approve relief from the zoning ordinance as part of the overall development plan. The PD district is existing, so it's in the zoning ordinance currently. The review process is existing, there wouldn't be any changes to this. What's before you today is a reduction in the minimum particular land area that's required to be able to apply for PD district rezoning. Currently, that's 200,000 square feet, about five acres, and with the current text amendment, this would be reduced to one acre. And then while this is before you, we also included some small administrative changes through the approval process that, of course, small errors or update this to reflect current administrative practices. The big advantage of the PD district is that it reduces the duplicative review that comes by the zoning going to you and being approved by the City Council, and variances being approved by the zoning board of appeals. That sort of twofold approval process increases sort of uncertainty that goes with the development process, and it adds to time for the approval process. This is the case currently in the perimeter center districts as well, where you all approve relief concurrently as a special land use permit. So, this would be somewhat similar to what you all had seen for AD4 perimeter center east, where you all approve concurrent special land use permits. Overall, this requires more upfront work by the applicants. So, instead of a relatively simple zoning plan, this requires much more engineering and more architectural work to be done upfront. And the other side of the coin is that this also requires a higher level of scrutiny in the review, both by us as the staff, to identify important issues upfront, and also by the Planning Commission, and by you all for the approval process, because again, what would be approved by this governs and overrides other sections of the zoning ordinance. And this text amendment has been before the Planning Commission last month, where they recommended approval to it by a six-to-one vote. They recommend two changes to this. The first one is to increase the minimum area required from one acre to 1.5 acres. Here, the discussion at the Planning Commission was centered around protecting residential neighborhoods and to make it harder to, let's say, purchase a single lot or purchase two lots and go for a plant development district. A second change was that the Planning Commission requested more time due to the higher level of scrutiny required, so they requested to be able to defer up to three times, while currently, for PD district rezonings, they can defer up to one time, as with all of other cases in front of the Planning Commission. With this, I'll conclude the presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, questions? John?
Thank you, Paul, for the presentation. The Plan Development Zoning District was put in place, as far as I remember, for very large parcels, and it was for a development that was going to be major changes, major infrastructure, and there was a lot of zoning, a lot of approvals that needed to get done. So, the initial City Council put that zoning place for very large parcels, and over time, it's gotten whittled down. Right now, it sounds like it's at five acres, and you want to put it down to one acre. To me, it almost seems like it's, we're going down to approved spot zoning, where we're taking very small parcels and we're zoning it specifically for what your developer wants. And I'm not sure that was really the intent of the initial plan development. That being said, the plan development now is, the goal of it is to have all the work done on the front end, where all of the approvals, all of the plans are all very structured and reviewed. And I listened to the Planning Commission, and they had a great conversation. For public information, the Planning Commission got scaled back a little bit on the number of approvals that they're allowed to, or the number of deferrals that they're allowed to review any project. So, if a project doesn't give them a whole lot of information in the past, maybe they could defer it, defer it, and defer it, while now they're not allowed to defer it very often. But this planned development is supposed to have all the documentation upfront, it should have lots of public interaction. Paul, how many public meetings are required for a planned development?
So, this, and this is the same as with all rezoning applications, but there's a pre-application meeting that's with the public, that's before someone can even file an application, then there's the Planning Commission hearing, that's a public meeting, and then there's your first read, that's a public hearing, and then the second read also.
Okay. Again, I'm concerned, and I like the Planning Commission's recommendations, is that in part of staff's recommendation to accept those recommendations, or what was staff's opinion of the Planning Commission's recommendations?
It is, it is not for the additional deferral. Again, the process is not new. The process is in place currently, and it's currently eligible for five acres now, so we think by reducing it down to one acre and up, we don't see the need for additional deferrals over what's currently allowed.
Okay. I personally am at the one and a half, if not higher. There's a planned development that is currently for sale by the City of Dunwoody on Shalaford Road. What is the size of those parcels now that we have for sale?
It's 2.8 acres approximately.
And is that for both properties? Is that for the building in the front, as well as the buildings in the back?
It's only the building in the back that's zoned PD.
Okay. And that's 2 point something acres, you said?
Yeah, 2.8 approximately.
All right. I'm not sure I want this planned development to be for a smaller portion of land, I'd much rather have for a larger portion. It seems like we might be doing this for that one piece of property, and that concerns me. Maybe we're not, I'm seeing somebody shake their head. But that being said, I don't want two pieces, two single-family homes get together and try to put together a planned development. I think that's a mistake. That's my opinion.
So, I forgot to start the public hearing. This is on me.
Okay.
You want to finish your comments, and then I will.
By all means, yeah, let me just finish.
Okay, that's fine.
Those are my concerns. I do like the Planning Commission's recommendations. I do want there to be as much, if this planned development item goes forward with major changes, I do want to have public interaction. I want the opportunity to, Planning Commission, to kick it back to the developer, to ask questions, to kick it back to the community and have them review, and then, you know, review it one more time, approve or deny, and send it to us. But I think this planned development is spot zoning, putting it to a very small, you know, parcel of land, and I'm not sure I'm in favor of it, but I do like the recommendations of the Planning Commission for numerous reviews, kickbacks, deferrals, sending it to, asking for changes, and making sure that there's full community buy-in from every aspect for this development if it moves forward. And it would be my recommendation that we go to two acres instead of 1.5. I think it's, you know, I understand why you're asking for it to a certain extent, but I think we're too small. That's it, those are my comments. Thank you.
All right. I have to do the public hearing. So, unless I see objection, I will open the public hearing. Seeing none, there is no public, it's, well, I don't know if there's public or not at City Hall, but Ginger, can you check to see if anybody... So, it'll be 10 minutes for this and 10 minutes against. Ginger, can you see if anybody wants to speak? For...
Yes. If anyone would like to speak in favor, please raise your hand in the Zoom application at this time.
Okay.
I see no hands raised at this time.
And is there anyone here? I see no one here. Go ahead. Ask opposed, please.
If anyone would like to speak opposed, please raise your hand in the Zoom application at this time. I see no hands raised at this time.
Anyone here? Thank you. All right. Can I just clarify? Oh, so unless there's objection, I'll close this public hearing. So, I, this didn't come about that property, it came out of a lot of frustration with the rezonings we've had lately that have a million moving parts, but nothing complete. I don't disagree with some of what you said, by the way, but I'm just saying that it was initiated by me. The idea was, how can we do this, but we could, when it's my turn to comment, I'll talk about some of the other stuff, just so you know. All right. Joe?
So, in general, I appreciate the situational dependent/flexibility, those would be the terms that I would apply to this, depends on the situation, and then applying flexibility to the plan. So, I'll give the Planning Commission, as those additional deferrals would be great for the additional feedback and review and process, so they get a quality product out through the public review process before it gets to council. So, those are just my initial thoughts right now. Thank you.
Okay. Stacy, anything?
Yeah, to Paul and Richard, how did you come up with one acre? Because that is two single-family residential lots.
It was, we discussed it and felt that that was... Single-family lots are generally not one acre, so...
It would be two put together, like, so, yes, so it's, so there are one-acre single-family lots, certainly in Dunwoody, but it also, you know, you could have two single-family lots go together. So, again, why, why go as small as one acre?
Just in our analysis of the perimeter center in Georgetown Village, a lot of those parcels are close to one acre. So, that was why we chose it.
Yeah. Council, we did the analysis for the residential lots, we didn't want to go as low to make it possible for a single-family residential lot to be eligible. So, I think there are, we counted there were 30 lots that are, 30 single-family lots that are an acre or larger, and so we felt that that was a low enough number to be reasonably sure that we didn't run into issues there. And an acre lots allows for a lot of sort of former commercial lots that are roughly at around that area, that are sort of ripe for redevelopment, and that are zoned currently C1 to be redevelopment, redeveloped with this, so it would broaden the application of this.
Pam?
So, basically, those vacant banks on Mount Vernon, those are about an acre, is that by the post office?
Yep.
Okay. So, that's about the size we're looking at. And then, I think the concern is invasion into the neighborhoods, like, you know, several council people said. Is there any way that this document can be written to exclude any neighborhood from using this with the developer?
It's not, not really, because, and this is, developers always have a right to ask for whatever they want. It's right now, I could, if I was the homeowner in a neighborhood, I could ask for it to be rezoned to the industrial district, and then it would be upon the City Council to reject my application because it's inappropriate, and the same is true with the PD district.
Okay. Thank you. Jim, sorry, I'm not going to forget. Nope, nothing, okay. Tom, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, some of my concerns are, have already been addressed. You know, as with anything else, I think there are pros and cons to this, you know, and so we need to decide, do the pros outweigh the cons? And also, are we kind of opening the door to potential unintended consequences? And that's my biggest concern. Are there things that we're going to open up to developers here that we may not want to do? You know, one of the concerns, and you know, it's been touched on a little bit, is how this might influence, you know, residential areas. Out of curiosity, you said that the one acre would apply to about 30 residential lots currently in the city. If, just out of curiosity, do we happen to know if we went with the Planning Commission's recommendation of one and a half acres, does that number change drastically, or is it going to be in that same ballpark?
Yeah, we looked at that too, and that would reduce it. So, there are 30 lots in residential districts of one acre or more, and there are 15 in single-family zoning districts that are 1.5 acre or more.
So, they actually have an acre, would essentially... So they actually have acre would essentially cut that in half. Um, and I just, I was just curious uh, how that might influence that.
And, and we have realistically, like, we have a lot of leftover parcels as part of this too, that are sort of the undevelopable parcel or the detention lots at, at that size point. So it's not, not all are sort of legitimate residential parcels. But it's often, you know, the, the stream buffer areas or like the, the undevelopable areas.
Okay, um, and, and another question I have, um, in section C5, it, it basically spells out that the ODP for the, for the PD governs if there's any sort of conflicts. Um, and so my concern here is, this is the area where I'm concerned where it could lead to potential unintended consequences because it's, it's, that's essentially saying if we have not specifically addressed something in that ODP, are we in essence approving the developer to do that? Or does it have to be specifically spelled out in that ODP for approval? Like, what, what happens with the underlying zoning? Is it referred back to that? Or, or I, I'm just curious how that works. Is, is, how specific is this ODP going to be? And if it's not specifically addressed, how is that handled?
So if, if let's say we approve a site plan in a, in a hilly part of the city and we accidentally approve or like to, to construct the site plan, they need to put in a forty foot retaining wall that's truly monstrous. They, they could build that retaining wall because it's, it's part of the ODP. And we weren't sort of mindful enough to look at the grading plan and, and so forth. So it, it would override, they would have the right to construct what's in the ODP. And it's sort of upon us and, and the developers sort of in tandem to make sure that, that we have the information we need to, to properly vet this.
Yeah, and, and currently, you know, like for example, with the perimeter overlay districts, we have standards established in there as far as public space and, and impervious surface and a whole list of, of requirements in there. And I know, I know that our comprehensive plan will, will dictate uh, what's allowed, but are we going to have some sort of a checklist or standards that we are handing to developers as they're coming in to start with saying, listen, this is what we're looking for and don't even consider, you know, trying to push something through that doesn't contain these types of things. How, how are we making sure that, you know, we're not getting, you know, something that we don't want? I mean, and I know, I know that we're approving a specific site plan, but I want to make sure that, again, unintended consequences, perhaps something that we overlooked uh, doesn't sneak through and, you know, we're getting a lot that's entirely concrete or, or doesn't have any public space or anything like that. Are, are we giving them a list of expectations?
Yeah, so. Or Richard, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we have, typically we see these developments, um, let's say a half year before they move to the application stage. And we have initial conversations with those developers. So we have on, on the staff level, and I'm sure some of you have the same thing where the developers reach out to you um, and, and run some of these proposals by you. And we are always using that to describe the city's vision, to describe um, what, what is expected. And we do this partially because that's sort of our role and we do this partially because we want developers to propose projects that can, can be approved. Like, we don't want to, you know, have start a half year process that then ends up in a denial. That's, that's not a good use of anyone's time. So we would do this and in these cases especially, we would lay out the expectations. Sort of, I'm constantly like in my sort of three months here, I'm picking up what I'm hearing from you and I'm sharing that back to the developers, um, so that we have something that meets the, meets the intent of, of, of what the city wants from development.
But that isn't specifically outlined anywhere with, with a, a planned development like this, correct? I mean, it's because it's sites plan specific. Okay, yeah, I mean, the, the, some of the positives, a- as the mayor has mentioned is, you know, one of the frustrations we have is when we were trying to review something and we don't have renderings, we don't really have a good idea of what it's going to look like. And, and from that standpoint, I think this is positive, but I do remain concerned of potential unintended consequences and potentially open up Pandora's box on uncertain things that we may not have intended to do. So that's all I have for now. Thanks.
So I have a question. So when we first talked about this a few months ago, I thought we were going to have a PD category for commercial and a PD category for residential. And I don't know what happened.
It's because the PD is a mixed use category.
But could it be based on the underlying zoning of the property? So I am not in favor of a one acre. I'm not even in favor of a one and a half acre for existing residential property. And so, because I want, if some developer is going to come in to redo a street, say, I want them to have to put in the, the requirement that they are um, going to have to do an assemblage and talk to the neighbors. You know, the whole point of this is, the whole reason I was interested in this is perhaps a solution to some of the current challenges that we've been facing in rezonings is to get first and foremost, a better product. And we get a better product by the developer being more upfront and prepared when they come to us. And so could we do a PD category? You don't have to answer today because this is just a first read. But could we have one that is one, regardless of what it, they're proposing, the acreage required is based on what's already there. So if the land is already zoned R100, it would be a PD whatever, and it would have a two or three acre minimum. And then the commercial zoning could be different. Cause I don't, what I don't want, and I under- understand, everyone here understands that we don't have to approve anything. But rather than waste developers' time and waste staff's time trying to get the developer where you think it might be something we want. And they can always come and rezone, right? There's nothing to stop someone from buying a piece of property or getting a, what's the word, contingency? Uh, putting a contingent offer on a rezoning, there's nothing to stop them. They don't have to use the PD. But could we, when, when we talked about it, what I envisioned was not the end product dictating the amount of acreage, but the initials, the current existing zoning. So is that possible?
Um, we'll look.
You can explore it.
Yeah.
But I think what I'm hearing up here is a lot of concerns about the PD use in current residential zoning situations. Um, I think I can say with a fair amount of confidence that everyone's a little concerned about that. And then, but, but we're also very eager for some of these older commercial pieces to get rezoned. So I'll leave you with that as feedback. I think that we probably ought to review the whole deferral thing for planning commission period. Um, you know, that was related to a very specific time, but I think it's more than reasonable to give them three deferrals on big projects. Um, and, but yes, so if you'll come back to us with that, that would be great.
Okay, I do want to point out that the currently, it's like four, it's a little under five acres.
Right.
That anybody could buy four acres and come in, in any neighborhood and apply for this.
Right, but you're asking us to lower it to one. And that's a big difference because one is, to Stacy's point, is two houses. Again, it doesn't mean that we're going to approve what they're bringing us, but I think we ought to start laying out, I think we, we owe it to everyone to lay out what we would approve. Like, I think that the guidance for this ought to be realistic. And so, but yes, they could buy one house. They could buy a half acre lot and try to rezone it. There's, as Paul made the point, everybody, every landowner in Georgia has the ability to ask for a rezoning. And so, but just if y'all could explore that, I think it would be helpful. So, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, John?
Again, the planned development to me was a partnership between the city and the developer for something that was really outside the box and something that we all wanted. I was trying to read the approval requirements on the planned development. Are the conditions for approval the same as the other development codes or is it something that, I just don't want it there and you don't want it there and it's not something that meets my vision? Is it something that we can just say no to? Or is it, we have to find one of the reasons in the other zoning codes, explain that to me in the sense of what, when am I allowed to say no to a planned development? I, I didn't read that very well in the proposal.
Yeah, so the, those considerations for resoning and that based on state law, that those.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit? I hate to interrupt, but I.
Yes, I apologize.
John had a great question. I want to hear your answer.
Yes, um, the approval criteria for resoning would stay the same as, as they are currently. And they're the same as for all districts and they're based on, on state law. And so that, that would be the same as, as it is currently.
Well, it sounds like we have some work to do on this, so we look forward to hearing from y'all again in the second read. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. So I, that's it. So Sharon, I think we're ready for the next item.
Mayor, in order, in order to amending chapter twenty seven of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinance by amending, amending article four, division four to adjust the allowable fence and wall.
Uh, second, second text amendment for today. Um, this is uh, for real yard fences in single family residential districts. Uh, currently we're allowing in the city of Dunwoody for residential properties, uh, fence heights of up to four feet in front yards, eight feet in real yards. And then it's a slightly different situation alongside street yards, but it's up to six feet more or less. This text amendment would reduce the maximum allowable height in real yards to six feet. And this chart shows what would be allowed, so the lower fence height up to four feet in the front yard and then six feet in the back. While what we currently have is uh, sort of a a three parts kind of difference, the four feet in the front, eight in the back and then on side streets up to six feet. Uh, the, the trade off here is um, sort of the individual residents want for privacy that comes with a taller fence versus uh, residents enjoyment of their natural setting and sort of the protection from uh, looming fences. We looked at it overall from uh, sort of a, a planning perspective, from a professional standpoint, if, if there are sort of any significant pros or cons of there's a consensus in, in the profession. And there, there really isn't, like, cities across the nation are split more or less between six and eight feet in what they allow in single family uh, residential districts. And that depends on sort of the neighborhood character of each individual municipality. Uh, in the Atlanta region, uh, we see, we do see also cities kind of having sort of the eight foot maximum and the six foot maximum. Uh, we do not have a good overview over um, what people are actually building in the cities. Sort of anecdotally, we, we get a few fence permit applications in specific situations and they tend to be more six feet, but we know that some people are also constructing eight foot fences in the city, uh, because we do not require the permitting for most residential fences. Uh, the planning commission reviewed this uh, at the, at the March public hearing and they recommended not going with this text amendment, so keeping it at eight feet in height with the side country with the presentation.
Okay, um, I'm going to open the public hearing. Ginger, if you can see, there's no one here. Well, there, Ginger, can you see if anyone would like to speak for this text amendment?
If anyone would like to speak in favor, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
If anyone would like to speak up, is against this, uh?
The, I apologize, someone did just raise their hand.
Yeah, I don't know if she's, therefore against.
Dana Gaines, I am moving you over so you should be able to turn on your camera and speak.
And she can speak for, against. It's not like there's a mad rush. Did we lose her? Oh, I think you may need to unmute yourself.
Sorry.
Hey Dana.
Yeah, am I on?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I don't know, I don't know how I'm voting. I'm voting for it being a six foot maximum fence as opposed to an eight foot maximum fence. I was the one that kind of started this whole thing.
Hmm, okay. So you just wanted to tell us that you support a six foot?
Yes, and if you'd like to see what an eight foot fence looks like, come see my backyard. Our neighbor has built an eight foot fence on his side yard that is um, now my backyard, which I have to look at. So that's why I brought it to the attention that um, a, an eight foot fence is not necessary between two neighbors.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Um, are there any, Ginger, can you see if anybody else wants to speak?
If you would like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, um, all right, so without objection, I close the public hearing. I'm going to start with Councilwoman Tom, if that's okay.
Since I brought this forward, thank you. Um, yes, like, um, we just uh, heard from one of our citizens, this was brought to my attention. And I see, and you all read that the planning commission did um, deny it because one of their reasons was that there just wasn't enough complaints warranted to, for the change. And my answer to that is, well, you, you wouldn't know until it probably would happen to you. And I saw what had happened and it didn't just affect one yard, it affected three. And the eight foot fence went up behind six foot fences and one vacant, uh, with no, and one yard without a fence. So that caused landscaping issues to the homeowners impacted by that eight foot fence. And really, there was, there's no reason for a fence that tall. Um, I can see in some areas in Dunwoody where like the planning commission suggested where we have a terrain of hills and you're going down and you need a higher fence so you don't look into someone's yard because it's sitting down from you. But then again, there's other things you can do other than an eight foot fence. For instance, Leland Cypress, you know, and you can do a smaller fence in front of those Lelands. It doesn't need to be an eight foot, eight foot. Um, I didn't realize this when this came in front of us a couple of years ago. And council did vote for the eight foot. We took it from six to eight. And now that I see the consequences of that happening, I regret voting that way. I should have realized how high an eight foot fence really is in a residential area. It's too hot. So that's why I brought it forward.
Okay, uh, Jim, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I do. I think one of the reasons that we went to the eighth foot is that there are places, um, one of the more prominent ones is.
Jim, can you speak up a little bit, please? It's a little hard to hear on our end.
Okay, what, I think one of the reasons that we went to the eighth foot was for a place, you know, for an example, like one of the manhasset's where the backyards face onto Mount Vernon just beyond the right of way. So, you know, they're basic, they've basically got an eight foot fence for the neighborhood screening them from, you know, the high traffic Mount Vernon situation. And, and I think that was one of the drivers for allowing an eight foot fence. That would, that, that would become a non-compliant fence. And I guess if they had to replace it, that, you know, they wouldn't be, would they be grandfathered in? you know, they wouldn't be, would they be grandfathered in, or would they have to drop down to a six-foot fence?
So if they're replacing it with a new fence, they would have to meet what's in the code. When the new fence is constructed, in practice, with the fence, it's always a little bit complicated to say what's a repair because repairs allowed, and the fence, you know, every part needs to be replaced every twelve years anyway. So in practice, we would classify that as a, as a repair, and and they could do a repair.
I mean, I, I see, you know, I see both sides of this condition, and, you know, again, for a condition like this one on Manhasset, I'm sure we could find other places like that. I don't see eight-foot as unreasonable. So I guess the, you know, I'm not necessarily in favor of making a change absent, you know, a little more compelling than reason than just one or two cases. Because I'm looking at, you know, four or five houses in this one case, and I'm sure we could find others similar to this. Thank you.
Paul and Richard, in that case that Jim just mentioned, in the document, you still can come to planning and permit and ask, correct? I mean, you can still ask for an eight-foot in the in certain conditions?
So you would have to. Yeah, you would have to apply for variance that's based on, but but you would have to meet the hardship threshold. So it's a tough one to meet for for fence heights, but but there is, there is the variance process.
I will say, one of those houses on my house that did come in front of the ZBA when I was on it, I forget how high they wanted to go. We did not give them as much as they wanted to, but we did give them a small variance. Just I was on the ZBA at the time.
Jim, was that it? Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I guess one of the things I'd, I guess I'd want to do is maybe run by Ms. Gaines' home and kind of see it firsthand, because sometimes what you perceive in your mind and what you actually see are two different things, but absent of having done that yet, you know, again, this is kind of a pardon upon which side of the fence you're standing on, right? I mean, it's there. There may be things that are unpleasant for the neighbor to look at, but there might be a reason that eight-foot fence is put there in the first place, because maybe the homeowner is trying to hide something as well that they don't want to see in their neighbor's lot or adjoining property. So I would be reluctant to move forward with this unless I was really hit with something compelling as to why we would need to make this change, because I think there are arguments on both side of, both sides of the fence, so, you know. Yeah, I'll keep running with them all night long, but, 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 so, if, and if that's the case, I would, my instinct would be to stay where we are unless there was a compelling reason to change it, so, but maybe I'll run by Ms. Gaines' house and take a look, if she'll allow me.
All right. John?
Feel exactly how Tom feels. I'm not seeing the major issue. I'm not sure if I have six-foot or eight-foot, but they're tall, and I want them to be tall. And I'm just not sure what I have, but.
Right, now you have to go home and measure.
I have to go home, and, you know, I can't see over it, but it's right, I don't know, eight or six, I don't know. But I'm not hearing the compelling problem either. We changed it. How many fences in Dunwoody are going to be non-conforming for how long? We're going to have different standards for how long, and depending on who does it, and if I only have six, again, I'm not hearing the issue. I'm not hearing lots of complaints. I am happy to take a look at the various issues that have risen. I want to make sure what a six-foot fence looks like and an eight-foot fence looks like. But I'm not sure this makes sense to push forward in this time.
Joe, do you have anything?
Sure. I also kind of go to the why do anything first is the first question. What is the problem? How many complaints? If we get, if we have some other complaints, I'd love to see that, well, I really would. I live in a non-conforming neighborhood now with zero setback, basically, and we got a berm, we you got a Lailan Cypress, but it's going on their side. My side. I'd also like to, it might be something, an alternative here as well as, how do we be good neighbors? Do, do we want to legislate it or strongly encourage, before you put up a fence, have you notified all your neighbors? Have you met with them and had a conversation? Before you cut down a tree on the neighboring property that they, they might like it or not, have you had a conversation with them? Can we ask, encourage, or regulate, go and talk to your neighbors first before you do something? Could, could we just kind of start at that level first, too, as well, right? So that's more of a little hypothetical question, but yet, if you were going to put up an eight-foot fence, send us a letter, a note saying, yeah, I've already contacted all my neighbors and find something like that, maybe. Thanks.
Stacy? Okay, so I have a question. I don't know if Pam can answer it, or staff can. If, right now, if you want to put up an eight-foot fence, you can do it by right. Is that correct? You have to notify anybody?
No, that's, that's correct.
When we used to have a six-foot limit, did you have, and you went to ZBA, you had to notify, right? You had to, because if you were going through the ZBA, you had this for variances, you had to notify your neighbors and this and that. Because I think part of the problem is, is that, again, I have no visual reference to any of this. It's no secret that that's not my strength. But, you know, it seems like that's part of the problem with the situation is the fence popped up overnight. If it's a side fence, I saw on here on one of the slides, Paul, about the rules for side fences, that they can be, is it six feet?
Yeah, so it depends on, so for side fences that are next to a neighboring lot, so if it's between you and your neighbor, those can be eight feet right now. Those on a street can go up to four feet, like if your corner lots and your side fences on the street, it can go up to four feet, or then up to six feet with a special administrative permit.
Okay, all right. Well, this has given us a lot to think about. Pam, do you have something else?
Yeah, and Joe, that would be great. I mean, that would have been wonderful for this neighbor, but what had happened, unfortunately, is he told the impacted three homes that it was going to be a six-foot, and like, it went up overnight as an eight.
I have one, one recommendation I would want to make, because fences currently do not require any sort of permitting activity by the city. So we have like nine thousand residential lots, like every ten years, the fence needs to be redone, so we have like nine hundred fences, up to nine hundred fences put up per year. And there's no permitting required, so people just do it. So I would encourage us to find a solution that is sort of simple, that is something, we were not accidentally creating code enforcement cases, because, you know, the requirements were so complex that people accidentally build a fence in a way they shouldn't have done.
Gotcha. Thank you. Anybody else? This is just the first read, so we'll be back. It'll be back. All right. We are now on to item seventeen. No, oh, consent. Thank you. I was moving ahead, looking at the time. All right, does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Joe?
I just want to make a public comment, a comment to the public to really pull out, if you really want to see what we do strategically, I always talk to, when I'm talking to people at large, citizens, they say, you know, we're like the board of directors. We do the planning, we do permit, we do the approvals for planning, for rezoning, budgets, and the guidance and strategic direction. So if you want to look at what we did in our retreat we just had on March eleventh, look at the meeting minutes. It says City Council Special Call Meeting Minutes. So take a look at that and see what we talked about. That's high level. It was one day, right? But see what we're going to be working on, and call us to task and say, hey, what's going on with XYZ? Get involved with what's going on. And you'll note that in September, we're going to have another follow-up check-in on that. And just late this week, we're doing a review on parks and, and a transportation capital improvement plan. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment about that on that agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I just wanted to point out that we are appointing a student member to the Sustainability Commission. Seamus Stevenson is a Dunwoody High School student, and he has applied and been approved to be on the Sustainability Committee. Congratulations. Additionally, we are allocating some CARES Act money to a small business. I think one had to be approved just now, as well as additional funding for I Care Atlanta to meet their increased demand for their services. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, I need a motion, please. Move to approve. Move by Stacy.
Second.
Second by Pam. All in favor signify by raising your hand. That's unanimous, Sharon. Now we go to business items. I believe Ms. Neighbors is next.
And there, I'll read that resolution.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry.
Okay, this will be. The right number.
It's seventeen. Because we removed sixteen from the agenda.
Correct, so that is not a resolution.
Right. That's okay. So this is Ms. Neighbors, are you going to present? We've already had the presentation.
Yes, this is for consideration and acceptance of a one-time financial donation to the City of Dunwoody, and it's for five trees at an estimated value of seven hundred and thirty dollars, and it is in commemoration. This is their donation in commemoration of their fiftieth anniversary. And this is the Dunwoody Women's Club.
Yes, we are very grateful. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right. Move to approve. Move by Stacy.
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, Sharon, that's temporarily six to oh, because. Right, it was, Joe had stepped out, so it's six to oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And thank you, Dunwoody Women's Club. We are very grateful for the work you do and for the new trees. Michael Smith, you're up.
Good evening. Last summer, the City Council approved a construction contract with the low bidder on the Georgetown Gateway Project. It was SDNC Construction. The city then issued a notice of intent to award a contract to SDNC. But due to the federal funding on the project, we had to wait for a notice to proceed from the Georgia DOT before we could execute the contract and give SDNC a notice to proceed. We, we didn't receive the GDOT notice to proceed till January of this year, and at that point, SDNC said that their subcontractors were going to be asking for a ten to fifteen percent cost increase over the original bids. The increase would have put SDNC's bid in the range of the second low bidder, which was Lawland Construction. When the city asked in writing for SDNC to confirm that they would accept the contract with the original bid prices, they responded in writing that they would not oppose decision by the city to declare the bid non-responsive as long as the city didn't take any adverse action against SDNC. So at that point, we asked GDOT and Federal Highway Administration for permission to move to the second bidder, which was Lawland Construction. That permission was granted, and we've discussed the project with Lawland, and they are willing to hold their original bid prices. There's a summary of the funding sources and anticipated commitments on page two of the memo, where you can see that the total project cost is still anticipated to be well within the funding allocated for the project by the city. Lawland is currently the contractor working on the Tilly Mills sidewalk project and making really good progress and, and doing a good job. So staff recommends approval of a contract for six million eight hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars, fifty-six cents with the law in construction, plus a ten percent contingency. This action will nullify the previous contract approval for SDNC, and as soon as this agreement's approved by council, we've been given authorization from GDOT to go ahead and execute this contract and issue a notice to proceed with Lawland under the previously approved construction agreement between the city and GDOT.
Right, any questions? Go ahead, John.
Michael, can you tell us about the water main and the gas light replacement in the sense of it's, I'm guessing it's going in front of a brand-new elementary school. It's going to be built at the same time. Any timelines, phases, anything like that? Is there anything that I'm just worried about all the projects hitting all at the same time and how that's going to affect traffic on Shandau Dunwoody Road?
Yes. You know, obviously, this, this delay, we're going to lose a little bit of time on the project, but we have been you know, this project has a lot of utility relocation, and so we have been working with utilities, and Atlanta Gaslight is getting geared up to start moving the gas main this summer, and Georgia Power is working on getting their easements. We are, we have been coordinating, communicating with the school system. We're awaiting their traffic report for the school, but fortunately, some of the improvements we're making already will, will be beneficial with the school. We may need to add a little to that, but based on the timelines of both, both projects, they may actually be going to construction before we're we're doing that part of our project, so we'll continue to communicate and coordinate with them.
Okay, yeah, just when I saw the, what seems to be a very large infrastructure project, I just worried about traffic flow on Shandau Dunwoody Road, the intersection. Thank you.
Anybody else? I do. And our attorneys and everybody have blessed this switching of contractors, correct?
Yes, we, we've had it reviewed by the attorneys, and like I said, GDOT and FHWA are comfortable with what we're doing.
And then, really hypothetically, I mean, this is so hypothetically. So supposing that in the infrastructure bill that maybe will get passed in DC, and it probably won't, but if it does, and it's looking at all this modernization of infrastructure, what, at what point is it too late to bury the lines?
It'll, on this project, it'll be too late by, by this fall, because.
Okay.
It's not already. Georgia Power is already working on getting there.
Okay, we should know something hopefully by this fall. All right, anybody else? All right, seeing that, I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
That was John, and John made the motion, Pam seconded. Any other discussion or comments? Jim, I forgot to call on you. Are you okay?
I'm good.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Sharon, that's unanimous. All right, I think, Michael, you're up again.
Yeah, this, this goes hand in hand with the previous agenda item. As part of the change in contractors, the GDOT has sent us a supplemental agreement to the original construction agreement, which which outlined, the original construction agreement outlined the federal funding that was going to be applied to the project, which was eighty percent of the original low bid. And is the maximum allowable federal match. With us going to Lawland, the second low bidder, where GDOT is adjusting the allocation to five point two million, which is the full amount that we had programmed through ARC and the tip, so we'll be getting all the federal funding that was originally allocated project, which amounts to seventy-six percent of Lawland's bid. So we're recommending approval of the supplemental agreement with GDOT so that we can get all the federal funding.
Right, anybody have any questions on this one, or a motion, maybe?
Move to approve.
Move by Joe. Second by Pam. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Sharon, that's six oh, because John. Sharon, that's six oh, because John stepped out. Next is Ms. Neighbors.
And there I'll read that resolution.
Oh, yeah, it is a resolution, sorry.
Okay. A resolution to declare property surplus to provide a mechanism for the sale and disposal of surplus property and for other lawful purposes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this item is for two vehicles in the Public Works Department to be surplus as well as obsolete IT Department equipment that we're asking for approval to surplus this, so we can, the city manager can authorize the sale or the disposal of it.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments on this? I don't see any. Move to approve. Second. Move by Pam. Second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. Signify your support by raising your hand. Sharon, that's seven oh, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Do have the next one that's a resolution, too.
Let me read that resolution, Linda, please.
Thank you.
It is a resolution to declare property surplus to provide a mechanism for the donation of surplus property and for other lawful purposes.
This is a police vehicle that is a 2013 Chevy Tahoe. Has an estimated mileage of 105,000, sustained damage on the body of it. And we're asking to surplus this vehicle and allow us to donate it to the Fulton County Public Safety Training Center. We do have our officers that train there. And they did ask for donations, and this is what this resolution will do.
Okay. Move to approve. I move by Pam.
Second.
Second by John. Tom, never look. Any further questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye. Sharon, that is six oh, because Stacy has stepped out. Michael Starling, you're next.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is an art easement, our first art easement under the public art ordinance at 5339 Shandley Dunwoody Road. It's the front door, to remind you exactly where this is. It's the front door between the Sproul Center for the Arts and the Public Library. The public art ordinance requires an art easement between the city of Dunwoody and the property owner. In this case, the property owner is the Public Facilities Authority. The Public Facilities Authority approved the mural location at their February 8 meeting, and the Art Commission approved the specific mural on March 17th of this year. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Pam. Second by John. Any questions?
I should not be so happy to see this. Thank you.
Yes. Any further? Jim, you okay? Okay.
Just a quick comment there. If you haven't seen the sculptures that are relatively new on those front steps, you should drive by and look at them.
That's a good comment.
See what they're going to do.
It's a good comment, and you've allowed Stacy to get back to her chair. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none. Thank you very much for bringing this to us, Michael. Exciting stuff.
Mayor, the next item is under discussion. It's a discussion of revised conceptual design for Mount Vernon Road between Corners Drive and Mount Vernon Place. Michael Smith.
Okay. But back in November of last year, we presented three alternative concepts for the Mount Vernon Road corridor between Corners Drive and Mount Vernon Place. There was, at the time, there was little support for a continuous center turn lane, but council expressed support for limited left turn lanes at some of the side streets. Asked, the takeaway was asking for a footprint and impact to be minimized as much as possible. Based on the feedback, we're coming back to council tonight with a revised Alternative 1, which was the left turn lane concept. I'll walk through the changes since the previous presentation.
Hey, Michael, can you try to speak up just a little bit, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that better? Can everybody see the screen, the presentation?
Yes, Michael, we can see it.
All right. So just comparing the previous alternative, we're calling 1B here at the top of the screen, and the new Alternative 1C shown at the bottom of the screen. This is starting at the west end of the project. At Vernon Lake Drive, there is the street pointing up to the upper right corner. You can see in the original alternative, there was a longer turn lane there, and we've shortened that. In the revised alternative, the original length was based on the amount of traffic during the peak period of the day. The shorter length turn lane would serve the turning vehicles adequately for most hours of the day. You may have a little bit of backing up during peak periods into the through lane, but you can, we could shorten it as much as shown here in Option Alternative 1C. If we went with the shorter one, we may be able to eliminate right-of-way acquisition on one parcel. But all the number of parcels that would need easements would still be the same. The next section here is between Vernon Lake to the left side of your screen and Stratham to the right. We looked at taking this center turn lane out in this section, but by the time you, you have to, these turn lanes, if you see here, have a taper to transition into and out of a turn lane. And so by the time you taper down east of Vernon Lake, and then you have to start tapering again for a left turn lane and the crosswalk at Stratham, you'd really only save about 100 feet in here that you would be able to take down the two lanes. We can do that, but we just left it the way it was, since it's such a short section, and it probably really wouldn't affect the impact significantly. If we keep it in here, too, or either way, we may be able to squeeze a, another refuge island pedestrian crossing at Vernon Lake in here, if it'll fit. At Stratham and Forest Springs, Stratham being on the left side of the screen. Here, we took the right turn lane out at Forest Springs in the Alternative 1C. Right now, that right turn lane serves an additional purpose of providing some visibility when you're turning out of Forest Springs. It helps to be able to see oncoming traffic. But when we put the path in on that side of the road and kind of open that shoulder up, I think the visibility will be improved even without the right turn lane. So we're taking that out, and that would potentially reduce some easement needs on that side of the road. The other thing we did is moved the pedestrian crossing from the west side of Stratham to the, just east of Forest Springs. From a pedestrian movement standpoint, that's probably a more direct path. If somebody's walking out of Dunwoody Club Forest on Forest Springs and wanting to go down towards the schools via Stratham, they can cross right here at Forest Springs and then walk down to Stratham and the sidewalk. The existing sidewalk on Stratham is already on that east side of the road. So it would, you know, somebody wouldn't have to walk down and back and then back across Stratham. So we moved that, and then we flipped the, previously, the left turn was serving Stratham. We've shortened it and made it a left turn into Forest Springs. The traffic on Stratham is really at a peak at about 45 minutes in the morning, that school arrival time. Whereas I think the traffic on Forest Springs is more evenly distributed throughout the day. So the left turn lane would probably be more useful at Forest Springs. But this area is tricky because of how close those streets are together. So I think it, you know, we need to look at this closely and really look at the traffic patterns before we settle on which direction for that turn lane. But we are showing a shorter section here with the right turn lane removed. And then the last area, we looked at the shortening the turn lane at Meadow Lake Drive here, and we ended up leaving it as it is. If we shortened it, you know, we have a pedestrian crossing in the east on the right side of the screen here. And if we shorten the left turn lane, that would, we would need to slide that pedestrian crossing down to create a refuge island, and it would end up kind of in the area of this driveway for parcel five and potentially be a conflict there. So the longer turn lane here that was originally proposed actually makes it easier to put the crossing in without conflicting with any of these residential driveways. So that's the changes we made. The rest of the presentation, the agenda packet is the original presentation from November. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'm going to start with Tom.
Hey, Michael, appreciate you guys listening to the feedback we gave you. There's a lot of good and positive changes in there. I do have a couple of questions. I'll start with where on the slide you're on now. And the location of that crosswalk, one of the concerns I had at the first meeting was that being not specifically at an intersection, but still close to Mount Vernon Place. And that's kind of a unique little jut-out road, and it's kind of a free-for-all and cars shoot out of there rather quickly. And because of kind of the layout of that area, I'm concerned it'll be a blind spot for pedestrians trying to cross, especially going from the south side of Mount Vernon to the north side. And I'm concerned that it's a dangerous spot for a crosswalk. Additionally, I mean, if we moved that, if there was a way to move that crosswalk down to Meadow Lake, I mean, that's where people would be going to walk to school anyway, to Vanderland. So I don't know if that was something that was evaluated, and if there's a reason why that could not be done. I guess start with the safety concern. Is that a, are there any issues with the location of that crosswalk? I'm just very concerned with knowing the Mount Vernon Place intersection, having navigated that multiple times, that that's a dangerous spot.
Yeah. Yeah, we can look at that a little closer. I think it's far enough away from the intersection. And one thing we're doing as part of the sidewalk tie-in there on Mount Vernon Place is we're going to, we're straightening that angle out just a little bit. We're going to extend the curb out and turn the road a little bit as it comes into Mount Vernon. So it won't be, especially for people going east and turning onto Mount Vernon Place, they won't be able to take that turn as fast as they do now. So we're doing that as part of an adjacent project. But I think, you know, there is room to move the crosswalk to the west side of Meadow Lake, but we looked at the same thing as we were talking about at Stratham. The people that would be using that would be coming from the east, from the Tilly Mill direction, and crossing, and then going down to Meadow Lake, and the Meadow Lake sidewalk is on that same side of the road. So we left it where it was to prevent that doubling back that you would have to do coming from that direction.
Okay, yeah, if you could just, again, my major concern is the safety of that location there with the crosswalk and cars shooting at them at Vernon Place. And then the other question I had is, and I know you addressed it in there, and with the way, the angles and all of that kind of stuff, but if there's something better we could do with that centered double two-way turn lane, I mean, it's essentially three driveways, two on the south side, one on the north side, that serve, or served by that, that, and that's in suicide lane is what it's called. And also, I'm just worried about, you know, just kind of just the visual impact of that and making the road wider. And I don't know, you know, I know we couldn't continue the median because of the driveways, because those residents wouldn't be able to turn into their, into their driveways. But if there's something better we could do there, I just, that's just the one part. And maybe there's not, I don't know, but it's just not something I'd like to see on Mount Vernon. So that's all my comments. I do appreciate all the other changes. I think it's looking good. Thanks.
Yeah, we may be able to make this median just a little bit longer before you get to that driveway. We'll take a look at that when we go into the final design.
Jim, are you finished? Tom, you done? Jim.
Hi, Michael, thanks. Go to the Meadow Lake slide, if you would. My question is, that the crosswalk there at parcel 27, is that going to be signalized like the one at Stratham?
We haven't got into that level of detail yet, but more than likely, yes, with the traffic volume we have on Mount Vernon.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see, because people still aren't well enough trained on those things. You know, I have recently seen people just blow through those things even when pushed, you know, so, which, you know, says to me that, you know, A, people aren't paying attention to pedestrians, and, you know, they're not even paying great attention when we've got, you know, a fair amount of technology and signalization in place for them. And, you know, the point is, I think we do need those, you know, to try to make Crossing Mount Vernon as safe as we can make it without putting in just, you know, a flat red light in the middle of it. So that's all I had. Thanks.
Pam, do you have anything? Stacy.
I just want to say, Michael, thanks for the changes. I mean, I feel like you listened to us, and it's reflected in the plan. I mean, I feel like we're almost there.
Joe.
Thanks. Yep. Thank you, Michael, for the feedback and modifications. I do have the same, similar concerns with Tom with that crossing. If we'd make a crossing island as well in the middle, like the other ones have, that's a refuge in the middle, that would be really nice. I think in general, aside from tonight, having separate conversations on what our crosswalk should look like citywide, what kind of signals should we have, what kind of treatment should they be, where they should be, and so on. I think that deserves a separate conversation as well, just to make sure that we have those standards down. And I think that's one of our to-dos or takeaways on that one. I also have the same concerns about that suicide lane, the reversible multi-direction center lane. Michael, could you, now I have some questions. This is about the bike facility. We have the bike lane going in the opposite, in the southbound side, heading east, but we don't have one in the west side. And I don't remember if, you know, been on council for over a year, of course, I've been a big advocate. Michael, do you know if the council's been presented with a FAQ or discussion point to talk about the different types of facilities and the difference of them, and the use of the context-sensitive, the term called context-sensitive, such as when is the best place for a side path or a multi-use trail, or a separated cycle track, or a bike lane, and so on? Have, has council in the last couple of years been presented with that information?
Yes, I think back, it was back in 2019 when we were talking about Mount Vernon at Tilly Mill. There was a discussion about where it would be appropriate to have paths adjacent to roadways to try to serve more, a wider variety of users. And we looked at the driveway spacing across the city, and, you know, there's places where there's really more driveway, there's too many driveways. But this stretch of Mount Vernon is one where the drive, on the north side of the road, the driveways are pretty widely spaced. And so we kind of, at that point, and then we talked about it a little bit again last year, we've started moving towards where a path does make sense. we, we've started moving towards where a path does make sense, trying to put a path in. But you, but you gotta look at the driveway spacing.
So is the longer-term plan for Mount Vernon, the multi-use path would extend how far westward eventually?
To Vermont. Once you get west of Vermont, you start having driveway, you have a short section leading up to Vermont where there's several residential driveways. But, but that would get you to another major road. Once you get west of Vermont on Mount Vernon, between there and Dunwoody Village, you've got a lot of driveways on both sides of the road.
So what would you recommend west of Vermont if you have a recommendation now?
The, the bike lanes that we have now.
So I'd like to propose that would be a protected or buffered bike lane with the separation that you would have, be able to have a ten-year-old comfortable out there separated. It doesn't have to be as high of a, you know, expense as we do on Ashford Dunnwood with the cycle track. But, you know, so, so I just want to make sure that we have a transition. So we have people that are already on the road, they're using the, the road, they're gonna be on the road. They're not gonna be riding on a multi-use path as well. We have, if you go down on the Chattahoochee River, on Julio Drive or on Riverside, et cetera, you'll see people on the, they're, the cyclists that are moving at any pace, they're not on the multi-use path. They're separated. They don't go on where, think, think about it, going through Brook Run, et cetera. I have concern with mixing users of different levels on the same facility in a built-up area such as this very, very important, critical on a ridgeline. Major connectivity to get from Gwinnett to Sandy Springs is Mount Vernon. And if you see on Saturdays or Sundays, a lot of recreational riders are using Mount Vernon today, and they're gonna continue using Mount Vernon. I predict the ones that are already riding today will not be using the side path, the, the multi-use path trail. They'll just be staying in the road. So we're actually losing, like for instance, the right turn lane on Stratham Drive, that quarter mile. As me, as a bicyclist, I, I take that lane. I ride in the middle of that, I consider myself private, it's my private, you know, eleven-foot bike lane. So they won't have any separate space, they're gonna be moving further into the road, taking the lane in there. They're not gonna go on the side path, the trail, and then come back on the bike lane if there's a bike lane facility. They're just gonna stay on the road. So I, I know we have right-of-way issues, I know there's cost concerns. And I know there's safety concerns as well. So the safest is you're not mixing it with cars, you don't, you're not just trusting a painted white line. I get that and I totally support that, want to see families and more casual people out there. But, but the idea is, if possible, if we go to, I don't know what the lane widths on the motor vehicle travel lanes widths configuration were. You know, you know, on the other side of Vermont, when we just did repaving a few years ago, we sort of put in bike lanes, but they're really like three feet wide, you know? So it's really not really, but it's like, okay enough if you're already out there. So I just want to see if there's a possibility of even just creating what I call a wide shoulder on the north side that's westbound, just to leave people that are gonna be ri- riding that use. Analogy is, is I was working with GDOT on Ashford, on Abernathy and the Diverging Diamond, where they're creating a diverging diamond on Abernathy and four hundred, just like at the, we did on Ashford Dunnwood Bridge. And what they told, GDOT said, if you're a person on bike, you're gonna go in the middle of that crossing, you're gonna push and go in the middle of that pedestrian crossway in the middle, just like you would cross on Ashford Dunnwood. And I, I asked GDOT and they changed their plan and they put, they're gonna put in wide bike lanes throughout that diverging diamond as well. So again, there's, there's multiple options on there. So I, I know I'm making more comment than questions, but could, could you look at lane width configuration and potentially get us onto that north side, a bikeable shoulder area of a, of a few extra feet? Is, is that anywhere in the art of the possibility?
Yeah, first let me kind of explain how we got to where we are. Originally, the, because we were doing the path, the concept didn't have any bike lanes. And then based on some of the feedback we got, we, you know, the, the logic of having a bike lane in the eastbound direction is that if somebody riding from Dunwoody Village, they're already in the bike lane going east. And if you, if you drop the bike lane, say at Vermont, then they've got to cross, set the signal and get on the path to continue their journey. So if you, if you put the bike lane in the eastbound direction, they can just continue in that, in that bike lane. And then, of course, going westbound, if they're starting from Jet Ferry, they're on the path. And they get to Vermont and then they just jump down and, and get in the bike lane. I, I hear what you're saying about, you know, some cyclists or a certain class of cyclists would probably not use the path. And so I, I don't, I don't think we have, you know, we have the lanes at eleven-foot lanes. We've done a lot of, we've reduced a lot of lanes down to ten feet across the city. We don't have any problem doing that. But we have them as eleven-foot lanes here because Mount Vernon is a truck route and a MARTA route. And I mean, I remember a few years ago when we were doing Dunwoody Village Parkway, we had to temporarily take those lanes down to ten feet. And when the MARTA bus comes through there, they're using every bit of that lane and having trouble staying in the ten feet. So I think, I think if you went less than eleven, you, you potentially, to try to squeeze a bike lane in there, you potentially create more of a hazard by the fact that those trucks and MARTA buses are probably gonna track over into that or encroach over into that bike lane. But, you know, we, a bike lane could be added, it's, you know, it'd take another four feet to get, to add that into this concept if, if that's what the council wanted to do for the west, or the, yeah, the westbound direction.
I think also just to thank you, Michael, for that conversation. Again, something more for a bigger picture discussion. Robert Striving from Austin, New Austin, that's ten-foot wide vehicle travel lanes, correct?
That's right.
Right. And I know this former with Sprinkle Consulting, his name, he works at Landis Evans, his name is Theo Petrich, P E, P T O E. He gave a presentation and Sprinkle did with, to the PCID and City Sandy Springs a couple of years ago when they were repaving perimeter, I'm sorry, in front of Pill Hill. Peachtree, Peachtree, Dunwoody. And, you know, they, they wanted, and he's got a study out there that shows per ASHTO standards, this studies that show there's no difference in design standards treatments between ten and twelve-foot wide lanes for motor vehicle behavior. So I, I, I get what you're saying, Michael. I know there's other P Es out there, there are, there's a little bit of difference. But anyhow, I, I think going to ten-feet lanes would, I'd like to just seek that as a, you know, a cheap and cheerful option of seeing what could happen. But I'll leave the conversation to others. Thank you for, thank you very much.
Hey, John, your turn.
Thank you. You've all had great comments and basically agree with almost everything you guys had to say. Joe brings up some good points. Public comment, looking for a bike lane. And the bikers that are biking now on Mount Vernon are gonna continue to stay in the road. They're not going to the path. I mean, I know that, you know that. And it's just a matter of, are we, I'm talking about the bikers. The real, the, yeah, the, the ones who've moved, whatever. But as far as the lane width is one of the things I was wondering more, in the sense of we're putting dividers up and we're putting up barriers sort of in the middle. I want to make sure that we have enough room there for the buses and for, more importantly, the emergency vehicles. Michael, those are taken into consideration and will work perfectly? Or where we add on the, the emergency vehicles on Mount Vernon?
Yeah, you'll have, but with the bike lane on the south side, you'll have fourteen feet of pavement on that side. So that, you know, that should allow for a disabled, getting around a disabled vehicle. Well, we can also make those median curbs mountable so that, you know, somebody can run up on them if they needed to. Because on the, the way it is right now on the north side, you'd have, including the gutter for the curb, you'd probably have about twelve feet where there's a median.
Okay. Again, at one point, the bike lanes on both sides of the road allowed for, when emergency vehicles, when Mount Vernon was completely packed, locked in, gridlocked, it allowed cars, everybody to move to the right and the fire trucks could go down the middle. And I'm not sure if that's always gonna be possible with some of these medians, but as long as they're drivable and there's not dividers in the middle. But yeah, the plan looks good. You guys have made lots of changes. Just wanted to make sure I raise those comments.
Anybody else? Oh, Jim. No, Jim already, I went to Jim. Okay, sorry. Anybody have anything else? Okay, I have a question, which is, the multipurpose trail is twelve feet, is that right?
Yes.
So, and, and there's no bike lane. But what if we, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there, what if we slightly shrunk? So let me ask you a question. Do bikers, the bikers that are riding on Mount Vernon now, the ones who have the speed, do they ride in bike lanes if they're available?
Yes.
Even if, okay. So could we, without adding a lot of cost, slightly shrink the multipurpose trail and end up with a bike lane going west? Is that the direction that there's not gonna, because there's not gonna be one right now, right?
That's right.
Then there's gonna be one past Vermont, right?
Yes.
So is that even a thing? I don't know if anybody on council would support me, but go ahead, Tom.
Well, would they, would that, would you have to move curb and gutter, is that a consideration?
That's what I'm asking, I think.
Well, on this, the section we're looking at right here, you would, you're probably gonna have to move curb and gutter anyway.
Right.
Actually, on most of it, because down here, where the, like down here, where you, where you have three lanes now, you're actually gonna pull the curb in to create space for that path. But how, what if, I mean, we, how about if we, as we move into the final design, we look at trying to get a bike lane in there going west? And, and also with the twelve-foot path.
Yeah, I'm, I just, I'm not an expert on any of this. But it seems to me that since we're not gonna be, since we don't want them on the multipurpose trail if they're really riding their bike, and we don't, we're not gonna have the multipurpose trail all the way down. It seems like that they're, that we might want to look at a protected bike lane even if we could. But yes, if you work towards it, you can come back and tell us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to fit it in. And if we run into a pinch point or some obstacle, then we could look at shrinking the path or, you know, doing something to, to make it fit.
Right. And, and I'm not, council hasn't said it's a priority either. I don't know how the rest of council feels about, you know, pinch points and all that. So I guess just as you work towards it, you can bring it back and ask us. Go ahead, Joe.
Example, so my wife Kathleen and I were out yesterday out on the Belt Line, but it's, there's a newer part past Crogue Street Market in Reynolds Town. That's a choke point if you go under the tunnel. By the way, we didn't go under the tunnel because there was spray painting and it was obnoxious and so they didn't want to go. But on the other side of the rail tracks, that's the one that was added in last year or two headed towards I-20. It goes to ten feet there.
Right.
And talk about highly built-up populated area, we were able to get by. You know, we were on our bikes, of course, and people were taking photographs and yada, yada. So that's ten feet, ASHTO says that's a minimum width recommended for.
So I don't know how council feels about that, Tom.
Yeah, well, I'm just looking at, and again, I, I don't know how accurate the, the lot lines are here. But if you're, if you're moving curb and gutter anyway, it appears by the pictures I'm looking at that there might be enough right-of-way to do it both ways. So I mean, that would obviously be my top choice because if you're moving curb and gutter anyway, that's the major expense and reason why you wouldn't do that. So if we can, if we can get the most of both world, best of both worlds, let's go for it.
Yes, thank you. All right, you need anything else from us, Michael?
No, I, I was just gonna say, from a cost standpoint, I don't think it's significant adding the bike lane. It'll just be, you know, right, right-of-way constraints. And it sounds like the consensus of the council is to try to, try to make it work with a bike lane in both directions. If, and if we run into problems, we can revisit it.
And then the crosswalk that they brought up, I think there's a lot of concern about that. And, and I'd like to see it as signalized as possible if that's, so, yeah, I think there's a lot of consensus about that up here, too.
And that's a lot of school crossing there, so.
Yeah, so, and if we want people to use it, otherwise we might, you know, if it's not perceived as safe, no one's gonna use it. Or they're gonna cross illegally and all kinds of chaos ensues. So anyway, thank you, Michael. We look forward to seeing this project proceed.
All right, thank you.
Next is Mr. Walker, Ms. Tomage and Mr. Secunder.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The agenda item I have tonight is the guide for nonprofit partners that we discussed at the March eighth meeting. Since it was discussed at council, excuse me, that meeting, we took comments from a meeting we had with the nonprofits and discussed the draft further with them. After that, Councilwoman Tomage made additional changes to the draft that is being presented to y'all tonight. With that, I will open up to any questions y'all have and I'll step back so Pam can discuss the changes that she made to the document.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or Pam, do you want to highlight anything? Okay, John, go ahead.
I'm just interested what was changed because there's no redlined version, so I'm trying to understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I should have done that. Well, it really wasn't, it was more deleting than redline, so that's why I should have done that, yes. But basically what we did, we took away the, a lot of the verbiage that was unnecessary of them coming here and showing us budgets and, and things like that. That was just over the top, really. That, that's not needed. We just want them to come to have this guide as just a formality of our partnership, just to seal it, sealed the deal and, you know, make it. And they'll come to us once a year with presentations, which they're, you know, Brent's doing a good job with that anyway. It's, it's just gonna be more regular because it was like here and there, they would come, oh, they'd skip a year. Oh, wait, let's come this year. This way, it just makes it cleaner.
All right, has this been vetted with the various partners?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yes, we've had, we had a, what, about a forty-five-minute Zoom call? And we've been emailing and they've all, they've all vetted it. They, what they're doing now is presenting it to their boards, if they have a board. And their boards are looking at it, but they, they've all weighed in.
Okay, thank you very much.
I mean, what I relate to the folks that we're talking about, that some folks were, you know, more concerned because there's different size of organizations.
Right.
And it's smaller or bigger, so it's not a one-size-fits-all. But it's nice to just, I try to relay that, it's just everybody's on the same sheet of music. If there's transitions, there's a new executive director, there's new board members, et cetera, in the nonprofits. We have visibility on who those folks are, we get notified and vice versa. It's just a nice way of keeping that, that, that communication flowing. And it is a partnership, so you saw on the packet, you know, here's what the city does as well. This is what you're getting, right? Aside from the subsidized rent or so on, used facilities, there's more to it than that, right? We are partners. That's also what we tried to relay and communicate to.
In fact, also what was added, I forgot to say this. We added a whole separate page that, with Jennifer's help, that explained all their media and how each form is done, social and imprint.
You know, the benefits.
Yes.
Any, anybody else? All right, so this will come back to us when it's ready to vote on after you get all the feedback, is that correct?
Basically, I think we've heard from, I believe there's just two organizations, specifically Sprawl and DPT, that are showing it to their boards.
Okay.
And other than that, it's.
Just whenever you're ready, just add it to the agenda. Thank you. Public comments. Public here. Ginger, can you check to see if there's any public comments?
If anyone would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Eric.
Yes, Mayor. Okay, I'm going to do the city managers' report. The, within the report sent out earlier this evening, you're going to have some updates from public works, talking about the Peeler Road sidewalk. That sidewalk has been completed from DeKalb Drive to the end, to the east end of the project. So that's done. Tilly Mill Sidewalk is also has, has completed all but the last 50-foot section of storm drain pipe on that project. Also, the spaulding at Chamley-Dunwoody intersection continues to move at a very nice pace, especially with the weather we're having this week. The Old Village Mill Run sidewalk, 500 feet of sidewalk have been completed there. And also, we're starting the 2021 paving has begun with reclamation. We're working on the branches in Oak Point Place right now. Old Spring House Lane, we're going to install water pipe in there. It's about 60% complete. Within the police department, our CRT and additional officers conducted a crosswalk sting. A total of 30 citations were written for violations of our VRU ordinance and the hands-free law. So that's something we're trying to get more and more of the message out there of, of what the regulations are to protect our vulnerable road users. There's also a lot more information within the police about what's going on within the city. The Parks Department, the Waterford Park Electrical Pavilion Rehabilitation is complete and the tennis court has been refurbished. The crews will be completing the parking lot and grading work this coming week. So that project's really coming on as well. The, we also finished the structural reinforcement work on the Donaldson-Bannister House at the beginning of the month. Community development is very active, 311 building inspections over the last three weeks, 130 new permits. The code enforcement team continues to work on delinquent business license renewals and we had 103 new applications for plan submittals. Also within there is another little fact, we have the city successfully renewed our B-City certification. So that's been, that's been renewed. Economic development, the URA is preparing a request for qualifications, again, on the commercial real estate for the two and a half acres commercial site. It was part of the Project Renaissance. So that's going out on the street. Under communications and marketing, several links within there for our second edition of the Dunwoody Digest. Also, the Parks and Recreation Microsite had a soft launch on March the 22nd and the mobile view completed on April the 1st. So when you have an opportunity, hit those links and check out what's going on within that area. As we saw earlier this evening, the Finance Department received notification from the GFOA Award for Financial Reporting for the 20, for the end of the year. And also Malden and Jenkins auditors are working on our annualized audit. With that, I'm glad to answer any questions you may have on the report.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I have a couple of questions. I read that we'd had seven signs, directional signs stolen out of Brick Run, which makes me really mad because I think we just put them there.
Yeah.
So my question is, do we have insurance to cover those or does that have to come out of our operational budget?
If, if it exceeds, if it exceeds the deductible for the insurance, then of course insurance does step in. We do have insurance for larger items, but smaller items have to come out of the operational budget.
Well, that just makes me even madder.
We have cameras. Any chance anything was caught on tape about the signs disappearing?
I'll have to check on that. I'll see, I'll see if the chief has any additional. We do have the cameras over there that do have the, the tag readers as well as other security cameras within the park. So we can, we can always, we'll double check on that.
I don't even know what was. Which signs are these?
It just says there were seven directional signs along the trail Brick Run that had been stolen.
Along the trail.
Brent, Brent is still, Brent's still there?
Yeah, I can comment. They, they're the curve ahead or intersection ahead sign, the standard street sign that you would see. They were.
Spring Break.
Yes.
Right.
So was it just put in, in the dirt then? Do we need to cement those in? Is that what it was?
No, it was, they were adhered to a steel sign, so they just yanked them off the steel backing. So we'll be attaching them stronger going forward. But, but yes, they stole that, then they stole our mirror for the crews to get in and out of the shop for the viewing mirror. So we, we assume it was spring breaker.
Yeah. All right, anybody else? Pam? Oh, comments or a question for Eric? Okay, I have a quick question. So I'm answering letters from second graders this week and my job is the best job. I can't tell you how cute these letters are, I'll share some of them with you, but litter is a big concern and I have to say I kind of agree. When is the next time we like street sweep? Do you know, Eric?
Sure, we do that on a quarterly basis. There's a cycle that it goes around. Now, it doesn't hit everywhere every day.
Right.
It hits certain corridors, but during the course of the year, just about all the streets are done. And, and it's an excellent program. I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor. And that program, of course, can be expanded at any point in time if there's more of a need or if there's an area that we'd like to target, we can certainly send the vehicle over there to switch that area.
I wonder if we need like a post-COVID like sweep-a-thon or certainly maybe a citywide, we can talk about another time, cleanup day or something, but these children are not wrong. All right, anybody else have questions for Eric? Okay. All right, council comments. John.
I just want to say how really honestly how proud I am. I mean, I'm honored to be up here amongst my peers and council member, the mayor, work with the staff for what we did today and executive session moving forward in this property acquisition potential. It really is, I mean, it's, it's a tingly moment. I really, really feel that way and I'm just really, really honored. I really, really am to be here, part of this, to see these generational transformational changes. Yeah, thank you.
Stacy.
One thing, another thing that I noticed in the police report is the crosswalk quote sting where our police officers are having to watch and target cars who are not stopping for a crosswalk. And we're sitting here talking about how to make our streets safer and how to do more crosswalks, but people, somebody in the crosswalk, you have to stop. Like we can't, we, we can't put any number of lights. It has to be driver awareness. So then don't get mad when you get a ticket because you didn't stop for somebody to stop. So that is kind of, we are doing our best and we want to make this safe and multi-use path and a crosswalk here. And you hear us talking about how to make it safer. At the end of the day, you're going to get a ticket if you don't stop for somebody to talk in a crosswalk and you get, and you get caught. So there's pedestrians, there's bikers. The mayor has coined the phrase and I've, Lynn, I've borrowed it time and time again, grace and space.
Especially, Pam.
Yes, I want to, now that we've just passed the year mark in this COVID pandemic year, I want to take this opportunity tonight to personally thank our mayor, Lynn, who has gone beyond, beyond just not the day-to-day operations of our city, but the true caring of our Dunwoody citizens and how you've helped our elderly population specifically to get their vaccines and the testing process. And Lynn, you have done an amazing job. So I took this opportunity to put this little gift together for you. It's, okay, let's show the people. It's a bowl from Spruill and then Farmhouse and everything is.
Oh, you're so sweet. You are so sweet. Thank you. Oh, look at the ball, the stress ball.
Yes.
Imagine who would do that. Thank you very much.
Oh, and that was not tax dollars, people.
Thank you very much. Thank you, that's very sweet. That's very kind. Jim?
Nicely done, Pam. As many of you know, we have been working for a couple, a few months now, actually, since December with Doraville to try to get in place, you know, a temporary MARTA circulator to serve our, you know, really our poorest community, parts of the community who are totally underserved by MARTA through all of COVID. The good news is that last week, MARTA announced that all the suspended bus routes are going to be restored as of Saturday, April 24th. And I just think this is a very good thing and it could have happened earlier, but it, but it is coming back. So there you have it. Thank you.
Yes, a very good announcement. Tom?
Yeah, I just want to give a little accolade here and it was already received tonight, but I just wanted to comment a little more on Patty Baker getting a sustainability award. The only thing that surprises me about getting that award is that it took this long for her to get it. Oh, my God. You know, as someone that served on, with Patty on the Sustainability Committee, which was what it was called then, it's now the commission, but you know, she was the original chair of that group and she set the bar so high and set the standard that really every Sustainability Committee since has had to live up to. She's done an amazing job. She's been a tireless advocate for the city on those issues, is very passionate about it. And I, you know, honestly, I think a tribute to her legacy is, we have three Sustainability Committee members, alums on, on the committee, on the council right now. So I, I'd just like to tip my hat to Patty. I appreciate everything she's done for the city of Dunwoody. I appreciate everything she's, she's done for me personally and well-deserved honor for her.
True. I guess I never thought about it, that she hadn't had it.
Lynn, can I just?
Yes, John, go ahead.
Um, council, we recognize a lot of people for a lot of things. We just recognized Patty Baker for public service. On Thursday, I can't say the word Dunwoody on the internet without me seeing it. When I saw that a 55-year-old man, I'm 54, a 55-year-old man died at the beach trying to save others, I had no idea who it was, but I'm racking my mind going, who is this? Who is this giving, caring individual that gave his own life to try to save other people? So I just, I just want to acknowledge Kim McGrady for saving others at a time of distress and he, he perished in doing so, but I just think it's something that we should not let pass without acknowledging. So it was a Dunwoody resident who served immediately upon being called. He jumped up, he ran into the water, he saved at least three. I heard a story that he saved three and then went back and formed a human chain and saved maybe, you know, six or eight others. It was just the stories I'm hearing about this man, who I did not know personally, but it just, it touched me. I just thought we should recognize it. So thank you.
Thank you, John. And additionally, we lost Larry Adams, who for anybody was a Dunwoody Elementary School parent or active in the DHA. He was a long con crossing guard and a very valued part of the community and probably your morning commute if you happen to go down Womack, as well as a longtime member and active member of DHA. And he will be missed, missed. And Pam, thank you very much. I could not have survived this last year without my very supportive council there. Everyone has stepped up. We've sort of reshaped how we've done things. The mayor doesn't have to know everything about everything and y'all have been a great support and I think, you know, we're really getting things done despite the pandemic. There's a lot of mayors who will tell you nothing has happened in their cities in the last year. And a big shout out to the staff, of course, for keeping us going and innovating along the way. So thank you very much. Save the date, Arts Festival, Mother's Day weekend at Brick Run Park, Baby Steps Back. So, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn. I need it. Thank you. I get moved by John, second by Stacy. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? You get to stay by yourself. We're adjourned. Thank you. Oh, you're so sweet. That was unnecessary.